Good evening and welcome to the August 8, 2022 City Council Roundtable. I am Mayor Ross. Tonight's roundtable is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Lasse.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew. And Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Thank you, City Clerk Estrada. I do. Then I saw Mayor Protem Mayhew online. Let's see. He was online. Should we go ahead and excuse? Excuse the absence of Councilmember Johnson?
Well, let's cover them both. Move to excuse Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Mayhew. Although Jim's down back on.
Okay, so Councilmember Johnson.
Second.
Then moved by Councilmember Holloway and second by Councilmember Lasse to excuse Councilmember Johnson from the roundtable. All those who favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, it has passed. So, motion passes and Councilmember Johnson is, absence is excused from the roundtable. As a reminder, members must seek recognition from the chair before speaking and be sure to raise your hand. We now move to our first item of the special business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the roundtable agenda. So moved.
Second.
Then moved by Councilmember Christensen and second by Councilmember Holloway to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Hearing none? Motion passes unanimously and the agenda for the roundtable is approved. So the first item for discussion this evening is Agenda Bill 22-098, Mill Site Planned Commercial Industrial Plan, quasi judicial land use matter. So the applicant, Snoqualmie Mills Ventures, is seeking city approval of a planned commercial industrial plan. This agenda item provides a presentation of the PCI plan, application, and accompanying environmental impact statement. Please note that because city council consideration, the mill site PCI plan is a closed record proceeding where this council considers the application based on the record that was made before the city's hearing examiner. Public comment on the mill site quasi judicial land use matter will not be accepted. Before staff begins presentation, I will turn the matter over to the city attorney, who will address the legal parameters pertaining to quasi judicial land use matters, including the appearance of fairness doctrine. But before you start, City Attorney Sturbank, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Johnson, who is now present. Aye, City Attorney Sturbank.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, as before, I will poll you quickly with a set of questions regarding the appearance of fairness doctrine and actual bias and related issues. To shorten matters, you can simply indicate, I'm going to group the questions into two. One specifically about ex parte communications. The other, to ask you whether anything has changed with respect to your answers to the slate of the broader questions about whether you have any interest in the property, any membership in any opponent groups, any employment with Snoqualmie Mill Ventures and the like. And if nothing has changed since your last answer when we met on, I believe it was July 26, you can just simply answer no change. So, has anything changed with respect to the quasi judicial questions other than ex parte communications? Councilmember Benson.
No change.
Councilmember Watten.
No change.
Councilmember Holloway.
No change.
Mayor Protem Mayhew.
No change.
Thank you. Councilmember Lasse.
No change.
Councilmember Christensen.
No change.
And Councilmember Johnson.
No change.
Thank you. And then, since the last meeting on July 26th, have you received any ex parte communications related to the mill site quasi judicial matter? Councilmember Benson.
None.
Councilmember Watten.
None.
Councilmember Holloway.
None.
Mayor Protem Mayhew.
None.
Councilmember Lasse.
I was approached by a, call it an intergovernmental partner to the city of Snoqualmie, asking questions about tax resources of the new development, what sort of basis we will be looking at in terms of that tax burden. I immediately stopped the conversation, said you need to reach out to the city administrator or the mayor. It's a quasi judicial discussion and I can't talk about those things.
Right. And did the person make any affirmative statements or they were asking you questions?
Just asking me questions.
All right. Thank you. And do you believe that questions in any way affect your ability to impartially hear and decide the mill site matter?
They have no effect on my.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
None.
Councilmember Johnson.
None.
All right, thank you, councilmembers. Mayor, that concludes my questions. I'll turn it back to you and Mr. Rogers.
Great, thank you, City Attorney Sturbank. Now Jason Rogers will present the PUD criteria and possibly, possibly the comp plan policies.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Jason Rogers, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department for the city of Snoqualmie. Tonight we'll be continuing our discussion on the Snoqualmie Mill Plan Commercial Industrial Plan. There it goes. Just to give you a brief agenda for tonight, we'll look at the schedule again and then we will look at the applicable criteria as the mayor mentioned, the PUD criteria. So this is the schedule we showed you previously. We've made some revisions to it based on the council's prior discussions. You can see from the red arrow there, we're on Monday, August 8, 2022, and we will be discussing the PUD criteria tonight. And as time allows, we can move into reviewing the conference of plan conformance and possibly the conditions of approval as well. Hopefully you've had a chance to review these materials ahead of time. This schedule, of course, takes the council through final action at the end of September. So as we previously discussed, the PCI plan decision on the council's part has several subparts. The council reviewed the PCI plan criteria in SMC 1720 before, reviewed the deviations criteria previously as well. Tonight, the council will consider the PUD criteria. That's in Chapter 17.50 of the Snoqualmie Municipal Code. So, the city's code requires a list of submittal requirements that allows staff to conduct a full analysis of the application. These PUD submittal criteria are similar to the requirements for other permits, but they include some extra information due to the size and the scope of these kinds of projects. So, these requirements range from basic information like a site plan, you know, a current conditions map or a survey, up to, in this case, you know, information showing parks and open space, vehicular and pedestrian circulation, a conceptual landscape plan, and utilities and some other plan sheets. You can see there, there's a reference in the code to what we're talking about and also a reminder, the conclusions and findings from the hearing examiner from the staff report are listed there to help you navigate quickly there. The other part of the PUD criteria here is, and this is where the main substance really lies beyond the submittal requirements. The PUD process requires the planning commission, or in this case, the hearing examiner, to make a report to the city council addressing six different elements. And these are coming straight out of the code, so it's, you can see the reference there on the screen. The staff report walks through these elements with a number of conclusions addressing all these areas. You can see there's about 20 conclusions listed there. The six elements include the suitability of the site, requirements of the subdivision code, mitigation of environmental impacts, compliance with PUD criteria, time limitations, if any, so this would be the phasing of it, and conformance with the conference of plan. Now, I'm going to focus on just a couple of these areas, including mitigation of environmental impacts and conformance with the conference of plan. The other sections include requirements that we largely discussed previously. So the things like suitability of site, you recall, the council extensively discussed the PCI plan criteria and that's where that comes into play. And, you know, time limitations, we've of course talked about, there's a 10 to 15 year buildout anticipated for this site. So, for mitigation of environmental impacts, I'll start here by noting that there are 39 CIPA mitigations that were in the EIS that are incorporated as conditions of approval for this project that are in the staff report and the hearing examiner's recommendation. The, there's also extensive discussion about environmental impacts and mitigations in the EIS, of course. That's, you know, that's what we spent a lot of time working with. Here, I'm going to focus just on three areas of the environment, including wetlands, the site contamination, environmental health, and traffic. That's not to say there aren't certainly other areas of the environment here. There's a very long listing of them in the EIS. You can see it's everything from plants and animals to conformance of plants and policies, down to historic and cultural resources, but trying to give you some highlights here and certainly we can discuss the other ones if the council desires.
Mr. Rogers, can you speak up a little bit more, more into the mic, please?
A little too tall.
Jason, excuse me, you actually come across really well on Zoom. It's just in here, we need you to project a little bit more, so I don't think you need to...
Okay, I'll just project.
You don't need to do squats.
I'll try to count on my mom, who is a teacher, a middle school teacher. Try to project a little more here. So, okay, turning to wetlands first. So the city council's, oh. Okay, turning to wetlands first. The city council's already looked at wetlands in the context of deviations. So this map should look familiar. It's important to note again that the wetlands and streams on the site are highly impacted today. There are small or non-existent buffers for these wetlands. They're oftentimes very degraded because of the lack of buffers and the historic use of the site. So the proposed plan, again, you've seen this before, would result in a net gain of buffers compared to what would otherwise be required. They would do, the applicant would do extensive restoration and mitigation work to bring these buffers up to snuff and make sure that the critical areas themselves then are restored to a functional condition. This would improve the environment for plants and animals. They would improve stormwater control a little bit. And so, all this would mitigate the impacts to wetlands and streams. This one, of course, you recall, shows the pink areas would be buffer impacts for the averaging. And then the crosshatched orange, which is down here, I know it's hard to see, is the additions. So, and again, there are no direct wetland impacts here, just impacts to buffers. So all that to say, the EIS analysis shows that this would be a very good net positive and would mitigate any impacts. So next, I'll move on to site contamination. This one is also addressed by condition number 21 in both the staff report and the hearing examiner's decision, so you may want to take a look at that. This on the screen is Exhibit 3.5.1 from the draft EIS. This map is showing where activities were historically occurring on the Snoqualmie Mill site. And so you can see largely that the structures and activities were largely confined to planning areas two up here and three down here. The historic power plant and smoke stack is down here. Some of the other buildings you can see in this aerial photo still, certainly were in existence when this photo was taken. And then Planning Area 1 over here didn't, was just used for log storage. They didn't have developed structures here. So, where this ends up is that because the heavy industrial facilities were occurring in Planning Areas 2 and 3 and Planning Area 1 didn't have these, the EIS indicates the Planning Area 1 isn't contaminated. There's nothing, there's nothing there. So based on the information in the EIS, the site contamination is largely, or largely consists of leakage from underground and above ground storage tanks, spillage from the various lubricants that were used for machinery. This is everything, the oils and things like that from vehicles driving around and the machines that they were using to process lumber. They had PCBs from some of the electrical equipment out there, some chlorophenolic, chlorophenolic, excuse me, compounds that were used for lumber treatment. In addition, they used boiler ash as fill in parts of Planning Area 3. This boiler ash would typically contain things like metals and other hydrocarbons. So, all this means a multi-year cleanup process is anticipated for Planning Areas 2 and 3. The exact timing, it can't be determined right now because we're not that far into the process, but the applicant's 10 to 15 year buildout period in phase construction is intended to accommodate this cleanup process. So this would involve the applicant working through what's called the Model Toxics Control Act, MACHA, is how we pronounce the acronym, process with ecology, the State Department of Ecology, to determine the, first of all, determine the full extent of site contamination and then work to remediate that contamination to safe levels as determined by ecology. So this isn't a situation where the applicant would say, oh yeah, we're done. Ecology could say, no, you're not, let's keep going. This graphic you see on the screen is from the Department of Ecology's website and it shows all the steps in the cleanup process. Ecology is the lead agency, as I noted, for this. They maintain the relevant standards. They have the staff experts on hand and Ecology has managed multiple site cleanups across the state of some very highly contaminated sites. We can certainly provide some examples. Today, on this, we are up here at the site hazard assessment. This was completed back last year. And so you can see there are a number of steps moving forward. You know, for example, there's a cleanup action plan. Then they'll have to do some engineering design and then they'll actually go out and do the cleanup until they get down to this purple step, which would be the site fully cleaned up, ready for occupancy.
Mr. Rogers?
Councilperson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is it okay to ask a question?
Yep.
Um, you made a comment and it may have been hypothetical, but is this generally a contentious process between builders and ecology? Or is it, is it, can it, does it also often, is it cooperative?
I mean, as with all processes, it can vary. I think in most cases, the, you know, the site owners have an incentive to clean it up because they can't develop it until it's cleaned up, of course. The cleanup can be expensive, but we have seen throughout the history of site cleanups in the state that once, you know, when you have a motivated landowner applicant, they're going to want to go through this because they're going to sink a lot of money into doing it and the only way they make their money back, of course, is by completing the project. And we've seen that elsewhere in the state. You can look down into Tacoma at the Point Ruston. One is, for example, that was a highly, highly contaminated site. They were doing creoso there, for example. There's a large mixed use development there today because the owner went through the process and got to where they are today. So, to your question.
What was that, was that process there contentious between the builder and the state? Or was it, was it cooperative or?
I wouldn't call it contentious. It was, you know, certainly they had to negotiate a lot. I mean, you see one of these in here, you know, there's legal, there's going to be legal agreements and interim actions. And so there's a lot of back and forth between ecology and the applicants.
But not necessarily, not necessarily acrimonious?
Correct. And I think, you know, and the, you know, the applicant, because it's closed record, the applicant certainly can't get up here and speak, but they have indicated previously that, you know, and it's in the application, they want to clean the site up and make it clean and get it developed.
Thank you.
Councilor Lasse.
And just to follow up on that, Jason, I'm just, we're being asked to approve the entire PCI Areas 1, 2, and 3. But the contamination only really occurs on Areas 2 and 3. What is it, what is there to keep the applicant from building out Area 1 and saying, I'm not going to spend the time or money to clean up Area 2 and 3, basically cashing out and moving on?
Um, this has come up before and the, I would say, so there's two answers here. One is the general history of these kinds of projects. And Mr. Johnson, one of the city's consultants, can speak to this in a lot more detail if you'd like. He has some extensive experience with other projects that have been through these multi-phase cleanups, you know, in Seattle, for example. The history is that the applicants get in there and they are going to continue pushing forward because, you know, they want to complete the project and get out. They're also liable because they're the property owner, they're liable, they are on the hook for whatever may or may not happen in the future. So, so those are kind of the two reasons. The secondary reason here, as I just mentioned, is this applicant is motivated to get this done and continue development of the site over the buildout period. As to, I think to answer a question you didn't quite ask, but I think it's relevant here. How we address Planning Areas 2 and 3 is something we're going to address in the development agreement because, you know, as you point out, the council's being asked to approve this whole PCI plan right here and now, but there's a level of detail we don't quite have for 2 and 3 yet. And until the applicant gets deep into this process you see on the screen with ecology, they don't exactly know, do they have to remove 20,000 cubic yards of dirt or 50,000 or whatever it's going to be? As they work through this, that's going to determine, you know, what actions the council may need to take, what actions the city might need to take as it relates to development of Planning Areas 2 and 3. And that's where the development agreement comes in to help identify what those actions may be.
Councilwoman Watten.
Thank you. Jason, would you be able to kind of walk us through the amount of time from the initial, where we're at now in the site hazard assessment to the final delisting? And I realize that, you know, much of this is on the Department of Ecology, but I mean, are we talking about a month's worth of work or years' worth of work?
Yeah, I mean, this will certainly be years, I think, because of, you know, let me step back a slide here for a second. I mean, this is a large site, it's 261 acres and there's, you know, and the EIS goes into detail about where the contamination on the site is likely to be found. And so, there's a number of areas and while some cleanup has already been completed, there's still more to do to bring the site to a point where ecology is going to say, no further action, is the technical term, a no further action letter. That's not going to happen in six months. That's going to, it is honestly going to take a number of years. And part of it just has to do with the applicant being able to work through over time, you know, you know, how do they finance all this? You know, because this, this level of work is very expensive, you know, because like I said, they're going to go in there and probably dig out a bunch of dirt and either take it away to clean it or bring in some new replacement clean dirt. All that's expensive and time consuming and you have to have some detailed engineering plans to make that happen. Same as you would for any kind of, just a clearing and grading permit that's going to move dirt around, especially in the floodplain. So, I think years is a pretty good estimate. You know, whether it's two years or 10 years is difficult to say at this stage, honestly.
And a follow-up question, if I may. Going through and doing the remediation that needs to be done on Planning Area 1, does that preclude them from starting the environmental process on 2 and 3? Would some of that happen as kind of a laggard? And, or does Planning Area 1 have to be finished first before moving on to 2 and 3?
I think ultimately that's, you know, they couldn't, there will be some overlap on steps in the process. They will likely be constructing elements of Planning Area 1 while simultaneously working through some of the preliminary work, some, you know, environmental review, for example, on 2 and 3. So I think we'll see things moving on parallel paths. And they could certainly start some of the cleanup work if they get to that point with ecology on 2 and 3 while they're built, still building 1. But if, like I said, it's really hard to say at this stage of the game. A lot also depends on market factors, frankly, of, you know, they will need to figure out what, you know, what exactly is going to get built. We have the generality of, you know, they're going to build these many 100,000 square feet of office or warehouse uses, but it's another thing entirely to say who's going to go in there and use it. And the applicant will have to work through that.
Thank you.
Councilor Christensen.
I had an additional question. Once the remediation has been done, is there an ongoing obligation to continue monitoring it to make sure that nothing else leaches out?
Yeah, typically.
I thought on the, there was a mention of it on the next slide, but I couldn't quite see far enough.
Oh, sorry, I know it's tiny, but typically, you can see there's monitoring and site use controls, so that, and then the final ones, reviews and delisting. So there are, this slide says five-year periodic review. So there is an ongoing requirement, yes.
Okay, and is ecology going to be reviewing this then with the applicant as it goes forward for a certain number of years or what does that look like?
The applicant will enter into the process with ecology and, and, I mean, this is the graphic representation of the general steps. I think the specifics are, you know, they will get into, ecology and the applicant will get into that in great detail.
Right. The particulars of the monitoring, when, how long, quarterly, annually, how many years, that would be specified by ecology based on its review of the cleanup and its determination what's necessary. And they may do that either as sort of preliminary step. Generally, they do that before they issue a determination that the cleanup is finished, which usually comes in the form, if it's an independent cleanup, it would come in the form of what's called a no further action letter or an NFA.
Okay, thank you.
And some of the answers to Councilmember Watten's question on the timing depends on the role that ecology decides to play in the past, when they are sufficiently staffed and if they deem the site a priority. They can assign what they call a site manager who manages the cleanup process and would approve cleanup plans in advance. For others, they allow the applicants to go ahead, prepare cleanup plans and then submit evidence of what's been done and soil and other data too. And then ecology would review it after the fact and make a determination, is that complete or do more steps need to be taken or more remedial investigation? So, a lot of the answers to the, the particular answers about how the timing will work, you know, are yet to be revealed by ecology's decisions on this. And the testimony in the record was, I think, from the applicant's experts that they've reached out to ecology and ecology has not assigned sufficient staff yet to make that determination of how they're going to proceed.
Yeah, because they were understaffed, correct? Wasn't that?
That's my understanding, from the record testimony.
All right, so I can, we'll move on from site contamination to traffic. Traffic was also extensively.
Sorry, Jason, just one more thing for, to some of Jason's comments about Mr. Johnson and his experience with cleanups. Mr. Johnson did testify at some length about those and in particular, in response to a comment from another agency about the perceived risk of the applicant developing Phase 1 and then stopping. I think Mr. Johnson's testimony was in his experience, that doesn't happen. But I would just refer counsel to that portion of the transcript and we can give you a page cite later if you would like to look at the testimony about that.
Councilwoman Watten.
Just one more question before we move on. What is the scope? Who's involved in the legal agreements? Is that between, obviously the applicant is, but is the city involved as part of that process along with the Department of Ecology? What's the scope on that?
Not in making the determination about what to do when and the sufficiency adequacy of the cleanup. That's entirely ecology's.
Okay, so, so the legal agreements is not a burden on the city. It's between the Department of Ecology and the applicant. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, traffic was also extensively analyzed in the EIS. This map is taken from the EIS and it shows the intersections that were analyzed in the EIS. And so you can see the site here in red and the number of intersections that, you know, not all of which exist today, but that they analyzed for site access. And then, all these intersections from the Tocco roundabout, all the way up the parkway, you can see every intersection along the parkway was analyzed. And then some additional ones out here, Reinig Road and 396th. Here's Meadow Brookway and 202, North Bend Way and Meadow Brookway. So this was a very extensive analysis. They also determined, we're looking at where are all these trips going to go in the road network? Buildout of Planning Area 1 would add over 5,700 daily trips to the road network. So that's spread over the whole day. It's not in the peak hour or anything. And full buildout of the whole site, Planning Areas 2 and 3 included, would add over 13,000 daily trips. As I said, these trips are going to be distributed throughout the road network. So it's, not all of them are going to be coming across the 202 bridge, going up the parkway to I-90. Some are going to go down toward Fall City. Some are going to head toward North Bend. Some are going to stay internal to Snoqualmie. For development of Planning Area 1, the EIS analysis indicated there's only one intersection that would see a reduction in level of service from the baseline no build scenario, and that's the intersection of Fisher and Snoqualmie Parkway. As you know, today it can be somewhat challenging, especially during peak time to make a left turn out of there. That would get worse. The Highway 10 interchange project, the one that Washout is doing, is going to alleviate the current traffic impacts there, create additional capacity, and development of Planning Area 1 would add approximately 3 to 4%. Area 1 would add approximately 3% to 4% to the peak traffic volume in that interchange, which is not a significant impact. So, to the point of mitigating environmental impacts, that interchange project will mitigate the traffic impact of this development at that particular intersection.
Councilor Lusay.
Just a quick question, Jason, for numbers understanding, because you say over 5,000 trips daily for Phase 1, or Area 1, and over 13,000 for Area, all Areas 1, 2, and 3. I don't know if this is on the record, and please stop me if it isn't, but how does that compare to, say, the Snoqualmie Ridge development, either SR1, SR2, in terms of number of trips that currently occur in either of those, or both, or whatever?
So, we can get you the answer to that. I can say the, this EIS for this project does analyze current conditions, and so it will detail what's the current daily traffic, say, on Snoqualmie Parkway. I don't have the number in front of me, so, but we can, we can get that. I believe, and Bob, correctly, if I'm wrong, I believe the SR1 and 2 EISs are on the record, or is it just the mixed-use file plans?
I think it's the ordinances relating to the mixed-use final plan adoptions that are in the record. There is, though, testimony by the city's traffic engineer, Chris Brayland from Farron Peers, who, he's spoken to the council before, and he did testify specifically about review that his firm has done of traffic generated by SR1 and SR2, in terms of whether it matched, exceeded, was less than what was predicted. And he said, over the lifespan of those developments, that the initial predictions of traffic were greater than what actually materialized it. In other words, that they were conservative. And so that, in his peer review of the EIS analysis, gave him confidence that the predicted impacts were correct, and were within, you know, reasonably expected range. I'm paraphrasing, of course, but again, if anyone would like that, sort of, to be directed to that part of the transcript, so you can review it or listen to it, we can certainly do that.
So I guess Mike-
Does that get to your-
Yeah, what I'm really looking for is, I mean, when SR1 was built, was it, is it a similar number of trips that this development generates? I'm just trying to get an understanding of-
Right, I think it's significantly more, and as Jason said, if, given the analysis, will show what the existing trips are, as compared to then the predicted additive trips from the mill site, you'll be able to see that ratio.
Okay, if we could get that at some point, doesn't need to be, obviously, it's going to be, got to look it up, but sure, good to know.
There's an entire traffic appendix which has all this information, so.
Councilor Watten.
And another traffic question. In the study, did it include the full buildout of State Route 18, which will occur somewhere around 29, 2029, as far as the impact, or is it the existing capacity on SR18 that's part of that traffic study?
That's a good question we'll have to look at. When the, you know, because the draft EIS was first issued, you know, a couple of years ago, at the time that, you know, they could only account for projects that were reasonably foreseeable, which generally means actually funded. And at the time, the SR18 improvement over Tiger Summit was not funded, that was, of course, that just happened the last legislative session. But we can look and see if that was taken into account or not. My guess is it was not, but, like I said, we'll look.
And my concern is this, is that, you know, if it's based on the old capacity of SR18, and the majority of those trips are going to end up like other traffic on SR18, that's significantly different than the future capacity that the state is, already has in play. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson.
Is there any discussion or analysis in there that I may not have seen of the type of traffic that we might see? And what I'm thinking about here is the big trucks that we see moving through our city. And based on those numbers, it sounds like the largest impact to traffic would be with the inclusion of building sites, or zones, or whatever they're called, 2 and 3, Planning Areas 2 and 3, which are, my understanding is not intended to be residential, which makes me think fewer family car-sized vehicles, and more big truck-sized vehicles in, when that happens. And that can have an impact on our roads, even though it's not so much an impact on the traffic volume, it does have an impact on, on the deterioration of our roads.
Sure, you're absolutely right. And the truck volumes were taken into account in the analysis, I don't recall the exact percentage, but we can find that. And Mr. Brayland, as the city attorney had mentioned, I believe had some testimony on this point about truck trips, and also construction traffic, because of course, we're going to need a lot of truck trips to build this over time. So, we can get you an answer on, on the truck traffic. Certainly, there will be regular vehicular car trips, no matter what, because, you know, the people who work there are going to need to get there somehow. So that, that's certainly going to account for a majority of the trips that we're seeing here.
Right, it also depends on the ultimate buildout of the uses. So, for example, I think Planning Area 3 has an office/park component, so those are more likely to be cars than trucks. Planning Area 2 has a potential warehousing component, could be the opposite there. So it will depend on that buildout. And again, as Jason said, I think that the assumptions on trucks versus cars is in the traffic analysis, I believe.
All right, so, for the full buildout, of course, as we've discussed, there would be greater traffic impacts because of the greater amount of traffic generated. The EIS identifies a number of roadway improvements to mitigate impacts, and these could include, you know, replacement and expansion of the 202 bridge, expansion of the Tocco roundabout, going, taking it from the current single-lane roundabout to a multi-lane roundabout. A number of intersection channelization improvements, along Snoqualmie Parkway, for example. So we're talking about things like turn lanes. A full signal at Fisher Avenue, roundabout down here at 99th and the parkway, and then potentially a roundabout here at North Bend Way and Meadow Brookway. The manner of determining the specific improvements, and the applicant's contribution to those improvements, because the applicant isn't responsible for all of the traffic that goes through these intersections today, they would only be responsible for a portion, so they would have to pay their prorata share of these improvements. That's something that would be included in the development agreement, you know, either a process for it, or an outright, here's their share.
Councilor Lusay, have you had none?
No, I had an itch.
So those are the highlights I had for environmental mitigation. As I said, there's a number of other elements of the environment, I'm happy to talk about those if the council desires. I think, you know, hopefully you've had a chance to read through all of that. There are, I can't remember the number of elements of the environment in the EIS, but, you know, we could talk about any of those. But for now, turning now to the conference of plan.
I do have a couple other questions on-
Councilor Lusay.
Sorry, I do have a couple of questions on the PUD that we didn't cover in your explanation, I just wanted to just clarify a couple of things. PUD development criteria, item 27, it's on page 39 of the staff report, just so I can give you a point if I'm looking. I think I understand the comment here, but I want to, you know, the site, in order to, requires to be at least 2 acres. Obviously, it's noted as the site being 261 acres. Is there, is there restrictions in the future, then, in terms of if the site is then subdivided, say, you know, multiple, into multiple parcels, building by building, parking lot by, or other areas, to where those parcels need to remain? A minimum of 2 acres?
No, that's not, so the requirement is that the site as a whole needs to be 2, a minimum of 2 acres, but once they, once you go through this development process, so I should back up, the PUD process, as you know, is largely intended to develop residential properties, and so naturally, in a residential subdivision-type approach to a PUD, you would take, say, a 5-acre parcel and divide it into a number of residential lots for sale. So those would necessarily be less than 2 acres. Same thing holds here, they have to have at least 2 acres of land for this PCI plan. They could then, in the future, divide it through either a subdivision, or a binding side improvement plan, into smaller chunks that they could, for sale, or lease, or management, however it would work out.
Yeah, it's common to these sorts of properties as they're developed over time, and then they're divided up, parts are sold, and such, so I just wanted to make sure I understood that that, that doesn't apply, that's what I'm hearing you say at this point. The other question I had was on item number 35, same under the PUD criteria. So it goes on to state, "The residential unit density may not exceed that of the underlying zoning district by more than 20%." It's indicating the requirement is not applicable, as there's no residential density limit in the PCI. However, the applicant's asking for residential, as a, you know, they're asking for multiple deviations on residential, one of those being to waive the conditional use permit process. So in terms of, if that's approved, what would be the underlying, I guess what I'm trying to get at is understanding what the density would actually be if that's approved for that parcel that is deemed residential? Because it would have, it'd have to have an underlying zoning of being residential in order to have residential. Are we exceeding the, what the Snoqualmie Municipal Code would require for density by more than 20%, if it is allowed to be residential?
So, what the, so the code specifies that residential uses, which is to say second-story residential uses, second story or above, are a conditional use. And there is, as you said, there's no density limitation, there's no, it's not 20 units per acre, or anything like that, there's just no limitation. And so, that means there can be any number of residential units from 0 up to however you could physically fit on the site, in theory. Obviously, you know, the reality is, they're not going to build 50-story residential towers here, that may not be consistent with the city's plans. All that to say, there is no density limitation here, and what the density might be if, when the applicant chooses to kind of divide this up, is some, you know, we can't determine that yet, because we don't know what the applicant will choose to do with dividing or not dividing Planning Area 1 up. They could choose to, you know, section off the individual buildings, which of course will affect a calculation, they could keep the whole Planning Area 1 all on its own, and that will give you, yield a different answer. But at the end, it's not applicable, because there is no density cap in the PCI zone.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing is, then, if the council were to grant a deviation to allow the, ultimately, to allow the height increase, which will allow more than 2 second-level residential, could allow third level, fourth level, fifth level, depending on how they divide that up with the height, there's really no limit to how much residential they could put on this property, is what I'm hearing based upon your explanation.
There isn't, from that, what you see, and this is jumping ahead slightly, but condition of approval number 1, that we would get to later, caps the number of residential units at 160. So, if they propose 161, the, you know, the way the conditions are in, the director, community development director could say, "You can't have that, number 161 is not allowed." And if they want to change that, the development agreement would include the process for how to change the PCI plan, that would be a council-level approval, most likely.
Okay. Those are my two questions, thank you for-
Councilor Watten.
So just for clarity's sake, we're talking about 261 acres, and the applicant is applying based on 160 units, which is 1 unit per 2 acres, or am I reading that incorrectly?
What is that, .75-ish units per acre, or some-
Yeah, so less than 1 unit per acre of the total development.
Per gross acre, yes. If you were to go net acres and remove all the-
Before taking out wetlands and-
And, you know, and I think to Councilmember Lusay's point, even that's not necessarily a realistic view of what the residential is going to look like, because if you were to do, you know, just a residential subdivision for 160 units on 261 acres, yeah, you know, you'll get these very large lot homes, but they're not, they're proposing a multifamily approach, and so it will look certainly denser than that. And if you were to draw a box around that, you know, an arbitrary box, I'm sure you could calculate the density, but it would be an arbitrary box right now.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the end of the PUD criteria?
Yeah, I was gonna, well, now we're, I can start talking about the conference of plan here, I know we're creeping up on the-
Let's see, Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew, do you have any questions? Seeing none, okay.
I do not have any questions at this point, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So turning now to the conference of plan, the staff report identifies 23 conference of plan policies that apply in some fashion to development on the mill site. The staff report demonstrates the applicant has complied with these conference of plan policies, with the exception of one, and that particular policy has a condition of approval to ensure compliance. So, I'm going to focus on some of the, some of the areas of the conference of plan here. I'll draw your attention to a few in particular, and you can see them listed on the screen. So we'll start with community character. The community character element of the conference of plan, in section E9 of that element, discusses the things development on the Snoqualmie Mill Site needs to do. These are things like improving access to the site for vehicles and pedestrians, improving connectivity to regional trails, ensuring environmental cleanup, and preserving the old powerhouse building. So the proposed PCI plan, of course, would do all these things. It's going to have better connections for vehicles and pedestrians, they're certainly going to do the site cleanup, the old powerhouse building and its smokestack are historic resource that would be preserved. I did want to highlight here, the city received a number of public comments related to the community character issue. A lot of these were how, you know, in the comments were saying, "This type of development is inconsistent with the city's small-town character." At the time of the public hearing, the hearings and will provide the city an opportunity to respond to those comments, among others. And this, so, the long history of this site, and I can flip to the next slide here, was, of course, an industrial facility, you know, a lumber mill. You can see some of what it looked like, the one on the left here is from 1944, the one on the right is sometime between 1930 and 1952. So this was a highly-developed, heavily-used site. And as I think we all know, the lumber mill and the lumber industry is intimately intertwined with the history of this city. You can see in this photo, you can see the buildings from the community of Snoqualmie Falls up there, the company town that existed mostly prior to World War II. And so, the city's conference of plan takes all this into account, and has been planning for development, redevelopment rather, of the Snoqualmie Mill Site for the last 30 years. And includes a number of things that would help to ensure that redevelopment of this site fits within the character of the city. It's making sure that the site is not very visible from elsewhere. You've heard from the aesthetic, you know, we discussed building height, that, you know, for the most part, you can't see onto the site, even if they build a 75-foot-tall building, you can't, you largely can't see this, certainly from the Snoqualmie Falls, you can't see it, you can't see it from downtown, certainly from up high, positions up higher, you might see that. But that level of screening is one thing to help it integrate. Because of the history of the industrial use of the site, having continued commercial industrial use of this site in the future is certainly keeping with the character of Snoqualmie. It won't be a lumber mill, of course, it will be something different, but it will still be this commercial-industrial development. And that's just the summary of the comments we got in the response, there are certainly additional public comments, there were over 30, and they're all in the records, you can go read them in detail, and see both what the comments are saying, and see what the response is. But I definitely wanted to highlight that here for the council, as we, as we move through this. Stepping back, there's also a number of policies related to economic development, and there's a couple that talk about ensuring that we're not getting low-density, low-wage jobs, and instead focusing on higher, on higher employment density, and some higher-wage jobs that more fit this community. This site is doing that. First of all, the percentage of warehouse uses here is roughly a third of the overall development of the site would be these, you know, the warehouse uses, the lower-density, lower-wage jobs. And balance is, of course, going to be taken up by office, retail, restaurants, and the higher wage or higher desire, desire jobs, you know, in a higher-density setting. You know, certainly you've seen the plans for the main mill street with the ground-floor retail- setting. You know, certainly you've seen the plans for the main mill street with the ground floor retail and the residential above. That's a little bit higher density there. In addition, there's policies about redevelopment of the Brownfield Site, that is the Snoqualmie Mill. It's, it's got some site contamination. It's not intensively used at the moment, even though it was in the past. And so the redevelopment of the Brownfield will ensure that it's getting cleaned up and used to a higher, better use than what it is today. Regarding open space in the environment, there's a number of policies here that talk about, you know, preserving the important parts, not the important parts, but preserving the things we need to preserve, the wetlands and other critical areas, and ensuring that this site moves from what it is today, which has some highly impacted areas on it, to having these, this connected series of green areas. And we've seen that on, on some of the, we click ahead to the right slide. So this is just a picture of Planning Area One. This is coming from the conceptual landscape plan, but you can see all the green areas that they'd be including. It's everything from, you know, the wetlands here and the stormwater facilities to this, this big well and eleven up here in the north. These would all be preserved and be enhanced to enhance the environment. I don't want to add too, too much to, you know, they add a lot of green trees over this parking lot, which makes it look nice and green, but.
Mr. Rogers, we have maybe one more minute, or is there any questions and we should wrap up for the?
I can just pause here and we can pick it up.
Any questions? All right, pause. And please note that tomorrow we will continue with the comp plan policies and possibly the conditions of approval. So councillor's desired to, I guess, go ahead and adjourn? Move to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Councillor Holloway, second by Councillor Benson to adjourn the roundtable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, motion passes and the time is six fifty-two, and we will re-adjourn for regular council meeting at seven PM.
Point of information, Mayor.
Yes, which point?
Will I stay on this connection or do I need, is there a separate connection for the council, for the regular council meeting?
Yes, please stand on this connection.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So council brings us to our regular meeting of the city council. The time is now seven PM. Let the record show that all council is present. Please stand, join me in the, saying the pledge allegiance, and it'll be led by Councillor Christiansen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we go to our first item of regular business, and it is to approve the agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move?
Second.
Been moved by Councillor Watten and second by Councillor Holloway to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none? All those to approve the agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Okay, motion passes unanimously to approve the agenda. The next item of business this evening is a council liaison appointment. Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew, would you please advise the appointments?
Oh. The current liaison to the Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition is me. This group meets monthly for a good portion of the year, not in the summer, but it meets in the mornings, which now conflict with my job. Councillor Watten has been attending these meetings in the past, representing the Chamber of Commerce, and so he's well acquainted with their work and the current status. He is willing and interested in representing us on this coalition. And so I appoint Rob Watten as council liaison to the Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition. Have a motion to approve.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew and second by Councillor Lusay to, to appoint Councillor Watten to the Southeast Coalition, Coalition of Transportation. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, motion passes.
Mayor, if I could comment?
Yes.
Thank you, Councillor Watten, for taking this on. This is a very important group, very involved with the SR eighteen project, and thank you for taking this on.
My pleasure.
I agree. Thank you, Councillor Watten. All right, thank you, Councillor Mayhew. Okay, at this time, we will provide time for residents to comment on items on the agenda. First, a few ground rules. Residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes each. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city residents, for the record. Direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor, or staff, or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your comments and concerns. Please also note that because the city council consideration of the mill site PCI plan is a closed-record proceeding, where council members consider the application based on the record that was made before the city's hearing examiner, public comment on the mill site quasi-dutational land use matter will not be accepted. So with that, anyone like to speak tonight, any concern that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand. And I know there is one item that's later. It's called a presentation, but it is not a resolution or ordinance. And so I know some people would like to speak to it during general public comment. Yes, please.
All right, I don't know all the proceedings. Okay. So I am Kelly Coughlin. I am the now CEO of the Snow Valley Regional Chamber. And I am here on behalf to thank you all for getting the ARPA funds figured out a couple last month. And also to kind of see, give a little bit of opinion on what we think the next phase should be with the ARPA funds. We've had a lot of things that have happened over the past six months. Things that we thought we were going to recover from have, we have not recovered from. And then there's a lot of other things that have happened with our businesses. One of them being that there's some funds out there from the federal that is it's called the, and I always forget it, the Employee Retention Credit. And we are missing out thousands and thousands, if not a million dollars, I think, that can go back into our, our economy if a lot of our businesses knew. We've been going business to business, but we still haven't had an opportunity to get that through. And I feel like some of these ARPA funds could help with that, with getting some of the businesses actually hire CPA to come in and literally go help these businesses receive these funds. I think that has to be something that is on our priority list because that funding is not going to stay around very much longer. But I feel like that is a big thing. And I think other businesses would also like to see a smaller grant as well with those funds. Maybe a five thousand dollar grant per place and maybe make it just for storefronts. We've got, a lot of our businesses are trying to recover, and then we've kind of got stuck in this, this other recovery mode of that we're having issues with is the recession, and it has hit us. We've, we are seeing a huge downturn in tourism, especially downtown Snoqualmie. So that is something that is also, would like to see something happen, and that is marketing, tourism marketing, that is also allowed in the ARPA funds the way it is set. And the other big thing is they're desperate for this winter. There's everything, I think a lot of the businesses are really kind of scared of what's going to happen with this, in this next couple of months. And so I would like to encourage that maybe we do a survey to find out what is the greatest concerns for all of our businesses to see what their thoughts are. But I also believe that our Christmas is something that needs to be our, it's not Christmas, our holiday lighting should be more thought after, because I think we get a lot of people that come into town with our holiday lighting. And I think if we had some more opportunities to do more center street, especially Center Boulevard and downtown and kind of made it not, and I'm not, I'm saying this lightly, not like downtown Bellevue does, but something to the fact that it's going to bring a lot of people in town. We have seen a lot of also problems with people in my time up. Okay, the other problem, well, just finish your final sentence. Oh, the other issues that we're having are, of course, are our labor issues. And so I would love to see us tackle a little bit more onto that to try to help our, our fellow business owners. Right. Thank you. Is there any other people like to make comments? I'm seeing none in the council chambers. There's one person attendee, and I'm seeing a person not raising their hand, so. Right, thank you for your comments. Moving on to the consent agenda, contains approval of the city council meeting minutes, roundtable meeting dated July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting dated July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting dated July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Approval of the claims report dated August second, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move?
Second, to move by Councillor Holloway and second by Councillor Christiansen. Is there any public comment regarding any of the items that are on the consent agenda? Seeing none in the chambers or online. Council, do you have any, any discussion? Seeing none? You want to vote? All those approve, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously, and the consent agenda is approved. Council, the next business, item of business is, are two ordinances. The first ordinance of council consideration is from the Community Development Committee, Agenda Bill twenty-two dash zero seven zero Downtown Relic Code Amendments. This is the second reading of the ordinance, number twelve sixty-two, adopting changes to historic downtown standards with the Snoqualmie Municipal Code. Councillor Johnson, would you please read the summary and motion?
The downtown relic code amendments are the Planning Commission, Planning Commission's recommendation for code changes that reflect the Community Development Committee direction from September seventh, twenty twenty-one. The recommendations focus on code changes to historic downtown streetscape regulations, service area regulations, and definitions. Move, move to adopt ordinance number one two six two, adopting changes to the historic downtown standards within the Snoqualmie Municipal Code.
Is there a second? Okay, it's moved by Councillor Johnson and second by Councillor Holloway to approve twenty-two dash zero seven zero. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So there's no one raising their hands in the chambers or online. Counselors, are there any discussion? Okay, moving to vote. All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously, and the agenda bill is approved. And I would like to thank the Planning Commission, the Community Development Committees, and the council for the historic relic work and review. And I believe that these changes will help enhance the area. So, thank you. Next ordinance is also a second reading, ordinance number twelve sixty-three, from Parks and Public Works Committee, Agenda Bill twenty-two dash zero nine five, adopting the twenty twenty-one King County Surface Water Design Manual. This is second reading on the ordinance. Councillor Holloway, will you please read the summary and motion?
Snoqualmie Municipal Code adopts by reference the twenty sixteen King County Surface Water Design Manual as one of the primary sources of stormwater management design regulation. The agenda bill provides for adoption of amendments to the city's surface water and stormwater management code to adopt the current iteration of the King County Surface Water Design Manual and the King County Surface Water Pollution Prevention Manual, and make other appropriate technical and clarifying amendments. Will take me down to the motion there. Move to adopt ordinance number one two six three, adopting the twenty twenty-one King County Surface Water Design Manual, the twenty twenty-one King County Stormwater Pollution Prevention Manual, and making additional technical changes to the Snoqualmie Municipal Code. May I have a second?
Seconded.
It's moved by Councillor Holloway and second by Councillor Benson. Is there any public comment regarding this item? I'm seeing no one raise their hands in public chambers, council chambers or online. Counselors, are there any discussion? All right. So this was the second reading, so seeing no discussion. Are there, let's go ahead and move to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Is there any report from Public Safety Committee?
Not at this time.
Any report from Community Development Committee?
No report.
All right, next report is Parks and Public Works, Agenda Bill twenty-two dash zero seven five, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight Capital Improvement Plan Adoption, Resolution number sixteen twenty. So this, the CIP was previously reviewed by the Parks and Public Works Council Committee on April nineteenth, May third, May seventeenth, July sixth, and August second. It's also reviewed by city council at the twenty, March twenty-sixth council retreat, April twenty-third council tour of the CIP locations, April thirty-first special meeting, June ninth, open house, June thirteenth council roundtable, July eleventh and July twenty-fifth council meetings. This is a planning and financial tool that helps the city of Snoqualmie identify and prioritize capital investments over a six-year period. Councillor Holloway, would you please read the summary and the motion?
First, the agenda bill is for council consideration, the mayor's twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight proposed capital improvement plan. The proposed CIP will be presented to the city council for deliberation. Move to approve Resolution sixteen twenty, approving the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight capital improvement plan.
Second.
It's moved by Councillor Holloway and second by Councillor Johnson to approve the capital improvement plan. Counselor, there's a couple of updates to the CIP. Men, our budget manager Drew Bote can review the updates and answer any questions regarding discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, council. Thank you for having me here with you today. This is the fourth update to the CIP, and it's designed to reflect council's feedback from the last session that we had. Today, we're going to go through some of the changes, and after hopefully we report on these changes to you, we're hoping to obtain council approval for the CIP. First off, I want to take a moment to thank the administration for their foresight and vision regarding the CIP, staff for their hard work to produce such a plan. And last but not least, council for your diligence in reviewing the CIP, the late night hours that you guys have spent looking over this document, and the changes that you have suggested to make it as strong as possible as a plan. And so with that said, I'd like to go over some of the changes that we made recently, per the questions that you had at the last session. First off, I've got the CIP on the screen here. And so I'm going to go to the first page that I would like to show you, which is page thirty-three as a part of this plan. Councillor Lusay had a question regarding secured versus unsecured sources of grants, appropriations, and other sources. And so we broke that down in terms of the table that you see here. From this table, we can report to you that most of the funding for the next biennium has been secured. There is a portion that is unsecured, but that is tied to the Meadow Brook Bridge Restoration Project, and the Parks and Public Works is working hard to try to secure those funds. A lot of the unsecured funds will happen in twenty twenty-five and beyond. And so we would work over the next two-year period in an attempt to secure those funds for the next four years after that. Subsequent to that, we heard from Councillor Johnson regarding, really an addition by subtraction regarding capital sources. As a part of the CIP, we had combined kind of a number of revenue sources for utilities with non-un utilities and some combination pie chart. We're happy to report that that pie chart is now gone. Let me get the CIP up. Back again. That pie chart was initially on page thirteen. It is no longer there. But in addition to that, we did look through the remaining part of the document, and there was a section within the executive summary that also merged utility and nonutility funding sources as well, which would have been on page five. And so I'm going to go to page five. that also merged utility and nonutility funding sources as well, which would have been on page five. And so I'm going to go to page five. If I get there to, if I can do that up here. My apologies if I'm a bit slow. But in essence, this table here that discusses sources by type, we did break it out by non-unilities and utilities to make it clear, especially for the public who may be paying attention to this. Next, after that, per Councilmember Johnson's suggestion, we did update the capital funding sustainability subsection on page 18. So I'm going to travel to page 18. In essence, what we did is show a difference within the table itself. And so you can see a new row called reoccurring sources over under reoccurring uses. And then also we made sure to clarify what we meant by committed capital taxes. So there's a footnote added to that that states that we excluded the non-reoccurring sales tax from that total. And then lastly, I think that primarily describes the changes overall to the document. Was it necessarily too much? But I want to take a moment just to stress a little bit because there have been some questions from council since that meeting wanting to discuss potential debt over the next six-year period. In essence, in terms of our non-unilities debt, we have provided kind of a schedule for you kind of starting on page 19 that describes really the debt that we would carry over the next six-year period. It's roughly $87,000 annually. The debt on this will not mature until 2030. And so there is really no maturity within the nonutility CIP regarding debt over this time period. And so with that said, the purpose of that debt at that time was in essence to help do some work along Falls Avenue. It also helped to purchase the city hall, or actually construct city hall, which we're no longer paying the portion of that on. That actually finished in 2021. And so in essence, that kind of describes the nonutility debt that we have currently. Lastly, we did have questions from Councilmember Mayhew regarding the street resurfacing program and the playground replacement program. And so at this time, I'd like to bring up Mike Chambliss if he would like to talk about that. So thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. So if you turn to your project number one, which is your street resurfacing program, Councilperson Mayhew was concerned that the resources that we were allocating were not sufficient to maintain the levels that we laid out for the Streetsaver Program. If you turn to the pages we gave you tonight, you can see at the top that the payment convention index levels that we've set are really high standards, actually. For the arterials, 80, and then collectors, resident local, and other at 75. I applaud you. My, my former assignment, our PCI was 35. We actually were removing the asphalt to make them dirt roads to improve the PCI, and I'm not joking. So I really do applaud you on this. So we went ahead and ran it through Streetsaver again and made sure that yes, the resources that we're allocating to the program over the next five years maintain those levels. Not only do it, does it maintain those levels, but if we combine 23 and 24, we, we meet the conditions with all the projects under 23 that we don't have to do anything in 24 and our next step is 2025. So we've also included maps behind that of each of the years, which show the segments of road. Because I know reading Streetsaver is so much fun. To show you what segments of road are there, you will have to go back to their original page to learn what the treatments are because the color coding would get a little crazy otherwise. Any questions about the street program? And then.
There is a question. Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew?
Yeah, so our historical spending has been at a higher level than this for many years. Many of the streets, particularly in downtown Snoqualmie, are in horrible shape. We know that many of our streets are increasingly approaching where they'll need to be resurfaced. I am very mindful that we just went to the voters this past November and asked them for a tax increase, which they approved, specifically stating that we needed more resources for amongst other things, our street program. Streets, sidewalks, other capital needs. So I feel fundamentally unable to support a reduction in the budget versus what we had in the last biennium. And down to a level that we have been at for many years, when we just told the voters that we needed more resources. So something just doesn't jive here. And we cannot go to voters, ask them to raise taxes and tell them there's a reason that we need it, and then use the money in another way and reduce the spending on the very thing or one of the very things that we told them that we needed the increased taxes to pay for. I find that just a horrible position to find myself in as an elected official. It's just not something that I can support. So I do not believe that we can lower the spending for our streets program below the level that we have budgeted in the last biennium. And unless that funding is restored to that level, I will not vote for this CIP. And I believe they were making a big mistake. I don't think that the notion that we should be shooting for a PCI of 35 is something that should ever be entertained in the city of Snoqualmie. And I think we've got a lot of street work that needs to be done. And I think, I think this is the wrong direction. I cannot support this. I think this is a big mistake. I encourage all the council members not to approve this CIP at a street level funding below that which we were at in the last biennium.
Councilor Holloway and then Councilor Watten.
So just for clarification, Director No Time suggested a PCI of 35. That was history in his past job. Okay, I, I do appreciate the PCI conversation because I'd love to have more of it as we begin to understand what that means. But in short, the higher the PCI, the better, one to zero. And if you get below 40 or 30, you might as well let it rot and replace it. So the object is not to go that low. Okay, he was just emphasizing that fact. I guess my then question to Mayor Pro Tim is, this is one element in the CIP. Are you proposing another number for streets to make it acceptable? Jim, you still there?
Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, I'm just waiting to be called on. I have my hand up, sorry. Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent question. I, I think there's room in this budget to keep the streets budget where it is and to allow us to have some further discussion. I agree with Councilmember Holloway, the correct focus is on the PCI index. Perhaps some nuances, some of the streets downtown are, I've driven them, they're well below 80. So I would move, I move to increase the amount for the streets program for the years 2022 and 2023 to be the same amount as they were in the previous CIP, the previously approved CIP from two years ago.
What number is that?
And I believe he meant 23, 24.
23 to be equal to 22.
Excuse me. Yeah, I'm, I'm moving, correcting my motion to refer to the years 2023 and 2024. For those two particular years, to have the streets program amount be the same as it was in the prior CIP that was approved two years ago.
Drew, do you have that number?
Yeah, one second. Yeah, as soon as it opens.
Kind of need the number to be able to say those magical words or that one magical word.
Are we going to second? Is there a second or?
Not yet. We need to know the numbers to.
So the table in front of you includes the previous two CIPs, the first one from September of 2019 and the one that we amended in May of 2021. As you can see, the first and second year is included right here and I will highlight that for you. So in essence, $635,250 in 2023 and $529,300 in 2024.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
It's moved by Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew and second by Councilor Lissay to increase the funding for the street resurfacing program for 2023 and 2024. Counselor Lissay?
Yeah, so based on what I'm seeing on the screen, I, I believe my fellow council member is proposing that the CIP from 2020 to 2025 indicated with the fourth year being 2023 and the fifth year being 2024, a budget number of $740,000 and $762,000. As I defer to the fellow council member to clarify, is that the years that he's, that he's requesting for those numbers?
Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew?
Yeah, so the numbers that I believe were passed in the last CIP two years ago, I believe are on row five of this, what's being presented here. And the purpose, the reason I'm focusing my motion on just those two years is that those are the two years that will end up in our budget proposal. And I'm willing to let, or willing, I'm, I, I want to allow room for the ongoing conversation between the Parks and Public Works Committee and the new Parks and Public Works Director and looking out at what it takes to maintain the PCI level. That's a great conversation. I feel that is, I, I don't support moving off of that for this biennium. If, as we go through the next two years, there's a consensus between, you know, the committee and the, that, that really, we can move below these historical spending levels and still maintain the PCI. If that's really where we get to, then I will support that. So rather than try and change the number for all of the six years or even the four years that overlap with the prior CIP, I'm saying let's for these two years hold it at that spending level and then let the other years be looked at as we, as we kind of go forward. But let's hold the spending for 23 and 24 at the same level, which is consistent with going to the taxpayers and asking for more resources for that. And it's consistent with knowing that we have some streets, particularly in downtown, that desperately need to be addressed. And so I'd like to see us stay at that level for this biennium, this coming biennium. Hopefully, I answered the question that was there and explained my reasoning.
All right, so let's see if I can drive this to a number. So Drew has up on, on the screen, we did the CIP for 2021, 2022, had a two-year total at the beginning of $3.4 million. We amended it and ended at $1.1 million at the end of the year based on amendments. Our current CIP has, what was the number, 950?
Correct.
950,000. So can I, and I don't want, as you see from 2021 to 2022, our eyes are often bigger than our stomachs. So I would recommend that we take the lower of those three numbers and we increase streets program for 2022 to 2023 to $1.1 million from 950. Would that be agreeable to you, Mayor Pro Tim?
Here's our first one.
Okay, what was that? Counselor Mayhew?
Yeah, so let me make sure I understand. So the, as, as currently presented in the CIP tonight, the numbers for 23 and 24, if I'm correct, are the amounts on row seven. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's last year, isn't it?
Yeah, first year that you see there regarding row seven, which is the proposed CIP that we have before you today, we have proposed $528,000 for 2023 and $553,000 for 2024.
I'm just confused because in column B, it says 21 to 26. Does that mean to say 23 to 28?
Oh, yes, that is correct. My apologies.
Oh, no problem. That's a, I just want to make sure I'm seeing the right numbers. Okay, so as presented tonight, it's the 528 and the 553. And if I'm understanding Councilmember Holloway's comment, he's saying perhaps we focus on the row six, which would be 635 plus 529. Is that a correct understanding?
No, I was focusing on rows 10 through 12.
So Councilmember Holloway, you mentioned $950,000. That is what we have essentially figured out in terms of Streetsaver, how much we may want to spend over the next two years. It would be a small cushion just in case we have additional work or inflationary pressures. But in essence, what we would, what we're proposing the budget for the biennium is a total of these two numbers here, the 528,000 and the 553,000, which equals 1.08 million, the number that you see here in row 12.
Okay, and then what was it for two years in the last?
So the first two years in the amended CIP, which council adopted in May of 2021, that number was 1.16 million, which is a combination of row six, C and D.
Okay, so let me revise my statement then, Mayor Pro Tim. Let's bring the number up to 1.16 million.
Which is the sum of row six, C and D. Is that correct?
Correct.
I, I, I would, and I, I can live with that.
So I do want to insert here real quick. So you mentioned earlier about Proposition One. It was approved by taxpayers and in the, and it was proposed that it would include street resurfacing programs, Snoqualmie Parkway Rehabilitation Sidewalk Replacement Program, which we do have a million or half a million dollars in projects going on right now and more proposed next year. So okay, so and he's going off of the pavement planned index, what do you call it? And we're just saying that we're not going to pay attention to that. We have money where we need, we need to spend the transportation funding elsewhere on the street, on the sidewalks, and we still have 1.4 million dollars that we're going to have to pay for Parkway. Councilmember Lissay had his hand up and.
Yeah, I just want to point out to my fellow council members, I want to make sure this is, that they see this. That the numbers they're proposing actually, while it is an overall increase over the next two years in this budget biennium, the second year is actually a reduction over what is proposed in the CIP from 553 down to 529.
True. Parks and Public Works Director Chambliss.
At the total two-year level, right now, we're, we're at about our existing 2023, 2024 streets value is?
1.08 million.
1.08 million. And the proposal is to take it to 1.16 million, which is $80,000, which doesn't scare me that much.
He's second. Parks, Mr. Chambliss?
I, I just wanted to point out that we did have a robust conversation about this during the Public Works Committee meeting. And one of the things that, that I, I explained is Streetsaver is a program that was developed by the military for air, airfields and for airfield payment, which has since been adopted as the go-to through a line.
as the go-to through a line of grant stuff where they said, well, we have this toll. We're going to use it to give our grant money. That's all history. But the one thing Street Saver is very bad at is dealing with a road that has a low PCI. It is going to take as much resource as it can and push it to the higher PCI roads to keep them from falling below those thresholds at the expense of those that have already fallen below those thresholds. Now, there's parameters that you set up in there. And unfortunately, I wasn't here last year when this contract started, and I have no idea how they got this thing set up. And I'm coming in at the end of the game. Unless we want to start over with a whole new contract with these guys, I, the ship has kind of sailed. But the Mayor Pro Tem is absolutely correct. There are streets that are in lousy shape. We just took care of one two weeks ago when we did Northern Street. You know, the mayor and the city administrator let us take care of that with some savings we had in the project that's going downtown. And we jumped on it and we got it done. So I am an absolute advocate for having some funds in the street program that are not programmed by Street Saver so we can take care of those absolute failed roads that are, are not on the radar screen.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
So looking on page 18, what I'm seeing in 2023 and 2024 is an over amount that adds up to around 2.1 million, if my math is correct. And this is 0.08 million if we went with just that number, comparing the row 11 and row 12 in the Excel spreadsheet. And I think the 0.08 is a lot less than 2.1. So to me, it's, it didn't seem like it's that huge of a difference between those two numbers. I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the motion. I'm just saying that, that I hear what the, what the Mayor Pro Tem is saying conceptually, but numbers on the ground, it's not that huge of a difference. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Councilor Watten?
Thank you. There are a couple of things. And while I appreciate Mayor Pro Tem's opinion on this, I'm, I tend to put more weight on the staff's recommendation. There are a couple of factors that I'm, I want to make sure that we acknowledge. One is Proposition One raised, and Drew can help clarify. I believe it was about 428,000 a year, somewhere in that amount, which is not the full spend on the streets.
Yeah, so in essence, we are forecasting, starting in 2023, roughly $570,000 from the 0.2% transportation sales tax. Just to add to that, there is a cash flow forecast called utility and transportation taxes as well, where you can see how we intend to allocate those dollars, I believe, on page around 17 or so.
Okay.
Yeah, actually a little bit sooner.
So I, I guess one of the concerns, the, the new sales tax at its projected revenue for the city is being fully utilized.
Yes.
In addition to that, we get a small portion back from the gas tax that goes into it. The, the, the second factor is, is that when we have, are in the process of turning the Parkway over to the state and that they're putting in 5 million, when that would have been a five-year project of the six and a half million or whatever it might be, that money, that 5 million, is able to go back into the streets. So it just seems to me like we're not really reducing the amount of money that's being dedicated into our street resurfacing program. In fact, if we did a deep dive, we're probably putting, would it be fair to say we're putting more money into the streets because of the state's contribution in helping take the pressure off of our spending over the next five to six years on Snoqualmie Parkway?
It certainly helps, indeed.
And so, you know, given that we've got this small delta and it, it would be something that we can come back to in two years when we revisit this, if we're coming up short on the street maintenance. But I'm comfortable in the fact that our, our director believes this is an adequate number to maintain our, our streets. And so, you know, with that, you know, I, I'd like to have it stand the way it's being presented.
Thank you. I think it's Mayor Pro Tem Mahieu.
Yeah, so I think some of this conversation is exactly what I hate most about politics. I think when we go and we say to voters, we need more money. We're going to spend it on streets and sidewalks, amongst other things. I believe we cannot, less than a year later, come back and lower our budget on those very things. Now, as the mayor pointed out, we have not lowered our spending on sidewalks. So, and I think there's one other that she mentioned. So I don't have such a concern there. But with streets, I simply cannot go along with lowering spending after we just told voters, please vote for a tax increase because we need it for this program. We must at least spend what we were planning to spend then. I would also say there's no $5 million from the, from the Parkway. The city had about 150,000 put away. We have never set aside the money necessary for the Parkway. There is no 5 million to recover because we never budgeted for it. We never put the money away, other than a few hundred thousand. There's no savings. We were facing a disaster. I would also say that the 1.4 million that we're saying the city will spend, there is no reason for the city to spend that. The state will spend that. I, I think that's a mistake. But it's, it's also 1.4 million that we never budgeted for in the past. We've never paid for in the past. So I just think we have to keep faith with voters. If we tell them we need money for a purpose, we cannot, nine months later, lower the spending on that purpose. And I'll say, I look over the far right column called total. 2019, we said we needed $4.4 million over six years for this program. Somehow, we got to 2.3 million. I am flabbergasted. I don't know how that happened. Now, we're saying, well, that was a mistake. 2.3 million is not the number. We're now saying 3.4 million is the number. So the notion that our staff has a good lock on this is just obviously refuted by these numbers. These are wild swings. I think that we have a new Public Works Director, Parks and Public Works Director, who I think we all have tremendous confidence in. He's new. He needs time to really get into this. So I'm trying to thread a needle here where we keep faith with the voters. We believe that, we, we, we take great caution in moving away, at least for this two-year period. Let's take great caution in moving away from what we thought just a year ago, a year and a half earlier, that we thought we needed, already very reduced from what we thought the last time we did a full CIP. Fine, the out years, let's, let's let that work through. Let's let our new Parks and Public Works Director really get familiar and be sure. But let's, don't make a big move like this. Let's hold our, our budgeting for this two-year period so that we're consistent with what we said to the voters. We're certainly not lowering spending, asking them for money. Let's hold the spending level there. And while we then look at the out periods, which I think I'm very worried about. So I just, I, I think it's pretty simple to me. I, I don't think there's enough time here to, to lower spending for this biennium. I think more work needs to be done. I think we need to stay true to what we told the voters. And so I think we need to make this move. That's my point of view. So I think, I think I've said some of that before, so I won't repeat it again. But that's my point of view. If we, if we pass this, if we move the spending back to that, I can support this. If not, I just can't.
Councilor Johnson?
I wonder if those swings that we're seeing could be justified by, in September 2019, we hadn't been working on a deal with the state, at least not very explicitly, for Snoqualmie Parkway. So it, it could be that past Parks and Public Works departments were trying to start to build some of that. I don't know if that's true, but it's possible. And then, and the next year, 2021, we're in the middle of a pandemic. And I think that a lot of departments were trying to tighten their belts. So I wonder if they were just saying, hey, let's just scale this back to the bare bones, make sure that we can just get through this crisis that we're in. And then now, we're coming back saying, okay, we're through that crisis. We're seeing that we're now actually at a better position financially to start taking care of other roads. I realize some of that was some speculation. I'm just saying that there could be justifications in there for why the numbers are what they are. Now, that does get me to a much more important question that really, to me, is going to determine whether or not I, I will support this motion. And I hate to put our Parks Public Works Director on the spot. But if there are members of the Parks and Public Works Department that are working on streets, if they were to go around and drive around town right now, could they find 83,000 plus some change dollars' worth of work that could be done over the next two years?
Sure.
Okay, that answers my question.
I'm probably going to do that next week, Peyton Crosswalks.
Councilor Holloway and then Councilor Watten?
Well, and I, I guess some fine points. One, if we remember the 2% sales tax, it was to grab sales tax from external to the city to, you know, they're coming in, they're buying stuff and leaving, but they're still using the streets. So we wanted to catch that tax instead of just applying the $40 tab to just citizens of Snoqualmie. So the tax increase was really to grab external users of our utility. Two, I don't believe at any time, either in the current proposed, the current proposed or the current motion, at any time do we fall below a level in spending where we would have surplus from that tax revenue that we couldn't spend on street sidewalks and appropriate transportation things. So at no time are we proposing a spending level in which we would not be meeting our obligation on that tax. Right? Now, we're talking $80,000. There's probably, I could pick a couple of sidewalks with trip hazards that we could go get that would cover that up. We're not talking a big chunk of change to make the difference here of 1.08 to 1.16. And that would more align with, let's keep the level we've got going. Let's get, get ourselves up to date from, or up to speed from having significant staff reductions to where we have a full data-driven plan reaching out through the out years. So I'm still, unless Mayor Pro Tem, you're telling me otherwise, I'm still supporting, let's take it from 1.08 to 1.16.
Councilor Watten?
Thank you. Just point of clarification. We, we replaced an existing car tab tax with a sales tax. We did not increase taxes on the citizens of Snoqualmie, but we are collecting revenues greater than we did when it was a car tab tax. So we're, we're talking about two separate things. It was not a, a tax increase. It was a redistribution to those that are more, are utilizing the streets without being residents and taxpayers here. So it is an offset.
Let's do a round robin real quick. Councilor Benson, do you have any comments?
Yeah, well, it doesn't sound to me like anybody's getting short-changed here. It just sounds like there's a, there's a cafeteria choice of things that we got to fix. And sidewalks were more expensive this year. And it sounds to me like, like the way that this, this tax was structured, residents of Snoqualmie got a good deal on that. We, we still are going to be taking care of the streets and surfaces. And nobody's pocketing anything. It's, it's, it's all staying within this program. I, 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 I'm not, I mean, I, I, hey, I hate taxes as much as the next guy. And I don't like any kind of waste or any kind of malfeasance with them. So I'm really sensitive to that. But I don't feel like that's what's going on here. It feels to me like, I mean, I look around at the streets and, and you're right, there are streets that need to be fixed. But I see streets getting fixed and I see sidewalks getting ground. I don't feel like citizens are getting screwed over here. I, I would, I would be very, very hesitant to slow down the approval process of the CIP because of this issue. Although I very much appreciate Mayor Pro Tem Mahieu's passion for it.
Any other comments? Councilor Johnson, the secret, Councilor Christiansen, do you have any comments regarding him?
I certainly appreciated the Mayor Pro Tem's additional comments on this. He did raise, I think, an important issue. But after hearing the discussion this evening, both from Parks and Public Works, our director, as well as the Chair of the Committee and the other folks here, I, I do feel comfortable with it. It's, it seems to be clear that we are still spending the funds that we're getting from taxes for the appropriate uses in terms of streets and sidewalks. And so I'm, I'm comfortable going forward. I would not want to hold up the budget further for this issue.
Councilor Lysay, have you commented on it?
I believe I had.
Okay.
But I would like to, I mean, it has, the conversation has moved around. I'm, I'm actually on the other end of the spectrum. I don't think we should reduce our street resurfacing budget for, from what we had it before. I think we're not doing enough. Our number one issue is transportation in our city and getting around. And if the roads are falling apart, they only get more expensive the later we do it. So the more we, more we can put into this biennium, if the budget will allow, I'd rather do that. I want to point out that we're not talking about the budget here. We're talking about a CIP. The budget is something different. But at the same time, I would not want to, I would not want to go less than what we are planning for any year, whether it's the biennium or not. So I would actually support an even higher increase, although I won't object. I'll, I'll support the proposal on the, motion on the table.
No. So Councilor Johnson?
When it was, Mr. Beattie going to respond to that or? So I just wanted to address maybe a couple of points. In terms of the history, back in September of 2019, we didn't necessarily have the data right to work with in terms of the Street Saver program in order to estimate the cost of the street resurfacing program at that time. So we were working probably with some numbers, primarily about four directors ago at this stage. Back in 20, really the summer of 2020, that is when we actually hired a consultant to produce a pavement condition index for the city of Snoqualmie. I don't think we had actually completed one in quite some time at that stage. From that, we were able to estimate what the budget would look like overall for a six-year period in order to maintain our streets at a certain condition level. I believe that condition or that PCI at that time that we were shooting for in terms of a target was 70. Subsequent to that time, Mike Chambliss here, as well as his staff, have been working on updating the PCI with the same consultant. And some of the numbers that you see produced as a part of the street treatment that you saw, the list of streets that you had there, and you saw the total at the bottom, in essence, came from that program itself. Director Chambliss spoke about the need to maybe maintain some cushion, right? For example, to support any sort of additional work that we may need overall. And I think we've probably produced a street resurfacing program budget that does reflect that. I would say, in terms of the proposed amendment, one of the important aspects to take a look at is really the financial schedules. And so I would ask for council to take a look at page 32 of your CIP document. In essence, when I hear the amendment and looking at the $83,000 increase, what I'm often looking at is the ending on utility CIP cash balance. And so I would just ask council to keep that in mind as they consider how much.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Mahieu?
So I object.
So I object to being silenced. I object to having my hand up and having other council members be called on who did not raise their hand. I object to staff being asked to make presentations all while I have my hand up. This is a council discussion, not a staff discussion. I object to how this is being handled. This is not correct. This is not proper. This is not how this should go. Secondly, separately, guys, when we tell people we're going to use a tax for a thing and we need more money, regardless of who we're, look, we could have done a smaller tax increase that would have raised the same amount of money that the previous car tabs raised, but shifted half of that to people that are non-residents but are users of our roads. So we had an opportunity, if we only needed the same amount of money, we had an opportunity to lower taxes on our residents. We didn't take that. So instead, we kept their taxes flat while we increased taxes on people that were coming to our city because we said we needed more resources for specific things, including street resurfacing. If, in fact, we lower the spending, what that means is we're taking those resources or spending them somewhere else. I don't think that's, I think that's problematic when we do that. If we at least keep the same level of spending, then we can say, hey, we were having to fund this from other places. Now we've got a more appropriate funding source. That's a good discussion. Asking for money for something and then lowering the spending is fundamentally a problem. I don't know how I face voters and answer that. I will tell you that we have been asked in public forums in the last few months about this. Why are you not giving back those taxes if you're not going to spend the money? This is not just some hypothetical. This is happening on Facebook and other places in our community. So I just think that restoring this funding is to the level that it was at when we asked the voters for more funding, I think is the right thing to do. I think that going down to 550,000 when we, two years ago, thought we needed 700,000, when we were spending 500,000 five years ago, this whole thing feels very wrong. I'm very worried that we're making a big decision that will be hard to dig our way out of, that some future council will have to dig our way out of. I think, you know, we come in, I know for a lot of us, it's the first time through this. Hey, you know, maybe those guys were all wet a couple of years ago. They didn't know what they were talking about. Why were they saying we needed this money? Well, maybe they weren't all wet. Maybe we're leaping to things too quickly. I'm saying, let's just hold the line the next two years. I'm not asking for an increase. Hold the line for the next two years. Let this work through and be sure before we get on, before we accept, you know, those subsequent four years. So I just think it's financial, if we're really going to go in and be willing to look at, at all these budgets and say, we're not going to give credence to what was done in the past. You know, we're going to have new employees who have been here a few months. Let's just change all these numbers. I think it's a big mistake. Give these people more time. I'm not saying hold the whole six years. I asked you to hold the two years. Okay, that's all I got to say.
Okay, so we are using the round robin approach. And no members can speak twice, more than twice, to a specific motion per parliamentary procedures.
That is not true, Mayor. That is made up by you. That is nowhere, show us that in writing.
We will.
That exists nowhere but made up by you.
And I believe that you did miss the recent training we all had.
I've been to plenty of training, Mayor. This exists nowhere but in your mind.
Moving on to round robin, any other comments? Councilor Johnson?
A couple of council members mentioned concerns that this could hold up the process. And I was just wondering, if it's changed right now, and, and we did support this motion, would that slow anything down? Or would it be, oh, we have now changed the number?
So there's an intention behind referencing page 32 of the nonutility CIP sources, uses and cash balances. Basically, the additional $83,000 as a consequence of that, we'd have to make sure that we check everything as a part of this document because there are certain cash flow forecasts that we have provided as well. But in terms of the ending fund balance that you have, say, for example, in 2024, the $685,000 that we showed there, show here currently, right now, would be decreased by $83,000 as a result of this amendment.
So what I'm understanding is that we would not be able to approve the whole CIP until there had been a process that would delay the CIP?
Well, I think you could, in my interpretation, you can.
No, wait.
Councilor Hallway?
Structure the motion appropriately that it covers that, such as what Drew was saying. If we were to couch the motion to, say, increase streets and roads to 1.16 million dollars.
For the biennium?
For the biennial. I was trying to figure out year one, year two split.
Yeah.
Taking the delta out of year-end balance, that satisfies. We've identified what additional money we're taking, where we're taking it from. You could pencil mark page 33 and be done with it. Drew will make it right in the computer and everything else when he publishes.
Yeah, can I move some men to do that?
Seconded.
I know, I know.
You want me to restate?
What's the original motion? We have a couple. We should only have one.
I believe the motion was to do that.
Councilor, or Councilor Mayhew, can I restate the motion? Can you get your concurrence to the restate?
Actually, do you want our city clerk to start it to read back the motion? The original motion?
No, I'd like to clean slate it and start with her, if Councilor Mayhew will allow a restate of the motion.
If I could just say, I think I'm going to say the same thing you did, which was?
Well, I'm, I'm just going to say it and have you nod.
Beautiful, go.
Okay. Restating the motion. Move to increase the street's CIP next biennial amount to 1.16 million dollars with the increase to be taken out of end-of-year balance for the CIP.
Yes.
So I believe that is a restate of his motion, and I seconded originally. We can move forward with that restate.
Okay, so restate by Councilor Hallway. Was it the second then? Mayor Protem Mayhew? Councilor Say?
I just want to make sure what, what he means is 1.164550 million dollars. We don't get to round.
$4,000 is not going to make a hell of a difference.
$4,000 is less than what we previously budgeted, which would be a reduction in the amount based upon a tax increase. We said that we needed the money.
In that case, Mayor Protem, will you allow amendment to change the number from 1.16 to 1.165?
Yes.
We're just, I gave an extra $500.
No, it's an extra $450. What is with your math?
To 1.65 million.
1.16.
1.165.
What is wrong with 1.164550?
Since that was an amendment to the motion, I believe it needs a second, so I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Councilor Hallway and seconded by Councilor Johnson to increase it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, voting on the amended motion. All those in favor, it's the aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
So there are six ayes and one nay. Voted by Councilor Watten. So now we're returning to the motion to increase it, the 2023, 2028 CIP to the new number.
The 2023 to 28 CIP.
Okay, to approve the 2028.
Point of order, I believe it is. I believe that we just voted on the, the little tiny increase, and now we need to go to the streets.
Amended.
Right.
Yes. The amended motion.
Right. So can you read that one back? City Clerk, start up.
I have to increase street's resurfacing program for the next biennial amount to 1.165 million with the increase to be taken out of the end-of-year balance. Is that the one we're? Yes.
I'm waiting for others to nod because I got lost. Oh.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, it's the aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
So vote 6 to 1 opposing Councilor Watten. So the motion passes and the amendment passes.
So now I think we're back to the main.
We said the main motion.
Resolution number 1620.
Which is approved resolution 1620, the CIP. Councilor Benson?
Yeah, I just want to make sure you saw that Mayor Protem Mayhew's hand is up.
I can see that. Councilor, or Mayor Protem Mayhew?
Yeah, I just have a question for Parks and Public Works Committee Chair. The other concern that was significant on my mind at our last meeting was the budget for the parks. And I, I think perhaps that was mentioned a little bit earlier in this meeting, but it sort of went by me quickly. I'm just looking for your, the committee's sort of thoughts or if, you know, if it's appropriate, you know, staff's comes. I'm just, I was worried that that amount had been lowered from prior, from the prior CIP two years ago. And I'm just wanted to be clear on kind of what the take was on that. And is the Parks and Public Works Committee comfortable with that number? And, you know, if so, why, sort of in, in comparison to where it was a couple, you know, at the last CIP?
Okay, we, we did a review, I'll let the director talk, but we did a review at a project level of what the plan was for parks and had others to speak. But I think we had concurrence in the committee that plan looked appropriate. If you want to give more color to that, go ahead, Mr. Director.
Sure. Went ahead and did inspections of approximately 40% of the parks. I hit the playgrounds that in the past were identified that needed to be replaced, taking their current conditions into, into account. I determined that the funds budgeted are appropriate for the next three. They're on a biennial basis, so the next three actions we're planning on doing for parks for the first two, in year 23 and year 25, and then year 27. I still have some cushion in there, and we're still in the process of auditing all the parks before I make the final determinations on the playgrounds there. But I personally believe the playground, the playground CIP budget is in good shape. We will have discussions about the operating budget and operating amounts. There needs to be some attention there. But as far as the CIP for the playgrounds go, it's in good shape.
Mayor Protem Mayhew?
Yeah, just a follow-up question. So thank you for that. That's very reassuring to hear. The one other thing that I've always sort of tried to stay focused on, since when I first came on the council, the Parks and Public Works Director had a, a schedule of all 40 parks or 39 parks that existed at that time. And it kind of went out over the next 20 years from that point. Sort of scheduling out, here's when this park and here's when that park would need work and so on. So it sort of created a 20-year view. I, I don't know, I never knew if that, you know, view was, you know, you know, how strong that or the quality of that view, but I knew there was at least an attempt to look out, which I found reassuring. The, the bigger question is with 40 parks, and I, I understand, not all those parks have playground equipment on them. Many do not. But just in terms of thinking, the one sort of thing nagging in the back of my mind is, do we feel comfortable that we don't have, you know, because we, I'm not asking this well, but if in the next three bienniums, we focus on sort of some big things that need to be done, it sounds like you're comfortable with that focus. Are you also comfortable that nothing sort of is, in all the rest of the parks, is sort of gonna, we're going to find ourselves six years from now, oh, my gosh, now we're facing something on these others that we sort of weren't, we didn't see coming? You know, have we kind of looked out for the rest of the parks for the longer term? And how comfortable are you? Yeah, nothing's falling apart out there. We'll be fine with this focus for these three bienniums. And we'll sort of be on, you're comfortable that we're on track. There's nothing else that, that you're not sure of or that you haven't had a look at. You're comfortable that we'll be on track for the longer term as well?
You asked me to tell the future a little bit. I am putting back together a table. In fact, I shared it with the committee of all the parks. I was able to put my hands on what was generated in the past and incorporated some of that information. I want it a little more granular than that was, so I'm, I'm getting that information in. I, I will be honest because that's the kind of guy I am. Your parks are suffering. I've discovered for the past four years that the many parks have had a $0 budget for repairs and maintenance, and no repairs and maintenance has really been occurring to any of the benches or structures out there. And there's quite a lot of them that are showing that. So I can't tell you how the budget conversations are going to go in the future, but that is when I'll be discussing those items. Those aren't capital expenses. Replacing a drinking fountain, replacing a picnic bench, wow, they are, they are very expensive. I mean, $15,000 for a drinking fountain, $5,000 for a bench. They really aren't capital expenditures, so they're not really germane to this, this discussion. As far as the playground replacement program goes, I'm comfortable with it. The, the playgrounds I looked at, the ones that we were worried about, a lot of them are doing in, in good shape. We have a few that aren't doing such a good shape, so I had to move them around a little bit. But I'm comfortable within the first year that will take care of two of the worst.
That's really reassuring. Thank you for sharing that. That, that's very helpful to me. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson?
Wanted to add in that in our discussions in Parks and Public Works, I believe that we were largely in agreement with the Parks and Public Works Director with regard to the substrate under the play structures, that we've got a lot of wood chips out there. And while that is the cheapest option upfront, it leads to all kinds of problems down the road. And so a large amount of the expense moving forward is likely going to be with regard to the substrate and going with more permanent and easier to maintain substances. I don't know if the Parks and Public Works Director wants to speak to that at all, but just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of that.
We did it at the committee level, so I'm comfortable leaving it there. But, but that is one of the high priorities of mine is to have a nice, resilient fall protection surfacing that's going to last many years, which is not wood chips. Yes?
Councilor Benson?
When we were talking about the, the resurfacing, one, I remember you talking about this, it impacting the schedule, like maybe putting off the replacement of, of a park a year out in, or I forget the exact amount of time. But that, that it might push back the replacement schedule for some parks a little bit in, in preference for making sure that we have fall protection services that are doing their jobs properly going forward.
Correct. In year 2025, I've identified two parks that have ported place surfacing that the subbase has failed or is in the process of failing. So you're starting to get the waviness in the ground out there. It's not treacherous. It's still intact. It's still doing its job. It's just not perfectly level. But come two years from now, it's going to need to be replaced. So doing that work will delay replacing the playgrounds at Carmichael and Swanson until 2027.
And those were originally scheduled for?
The fall, those parks just had their playgrounds done in the last five to seven years. So they really weren't scheduled, but when I hit the ground, and one case really hit the ground. Yeah, the site conditions were observed and noted.
Hope you're not testing out these fall protection services yourself. You have something to do that.
Fall Protection Service at Stellar Park Works. Stellar Fall Protection Service. Because I did test that one.
We, we can't, we can't afford for you to be the test dummy. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Comments, questions? Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew?
Yeah, so the, the last two questions I have, I have to really, have to do with a comment I made in previous session or sessions. Which is each of these first, by the way, I'll just make the side comment, for any of you councilors that aren't paying attention, this is the biggest vote you'll take this year. You will not make another vote this big with this many dollars involved this year. It's the biggest vote you'll take by far. So in terms of dollar amount. So anyway, the thing I want, just want to focus on is in the next biennial, we've got, if I'm reading this right, about 17 million and then 20, so 37, $38 million of expenditures. And as I kind of mentioned, we've never spent anywhere remotely close to $38 million of expenditures in our capital budget in a biennial before. I do not believe there's any chance we will spend that kind of money in this biennial. So then I think to myself, okay, so is that a problem? The only problem I see is that therefore decisions someone will be making, or some people will be making decisions about which of these we actually do and which we do not, which we defer. Now, I just want to be sure that we're clear. I'm, I'm not sure I have a concern about this, but I just want us to be clear. Are we, by approving all of these, we're basically saying, administration, you decide which of these to do. You can't do any that are outside of the 34 million or whatever the number is without coming back to us. But within this, you can pick what you actually think you can do and which not. Just want to make sure we're comfortable with that. I'm not saying we shouldn't be, but we're comfortable delegating that to administration. You can kind of do whichever of these in which order you decide on. So I want to be sure we're willing to, to do that. So I just want to make sure that we're all thinking about that. The other option would be to scale back, so we's not take them out of the CIP, but maybe push them to some of the out years to be more explicit in our prioritization of which things we want done in this biennial versus which subsequently. So are you sure you're okay with that? And then there's also one item on here, which I think, I, I'm just not sure where I'm at until I see the operating budget, and that's the ladder truck. I know I want 1.5 million in this CIP for that ladder truck. What I'm not sure is whether that should get spent in this biennial, and I won't know until I see the operating budget, so. I'm okay leaving it there. I would prefer seeing us pushing it out of this biennial, but keeping it in the CIP. But I'm okay with it because they have to come back and ask us before they actually spend that 1.5 million anyway. So we could kind of, by that point, we'll have been through the operating budget, but I, so, so I can live with these. I just want to make sure that we all can live with those decisions. So if none of you raise any further discussion on this, I will vote for this as, as we've amended it tonight. But just want to be sure that none of you think we should relook at any of what I've just mentioned.
Councilor Watten?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and this is one thing that I would agree with Councilmember Mayhew on, and that's, I, while I value the work of the fire department and want to make sure that they have the equipment necessary to do their job well. It is probably the one item that makes me least comfortable with, and that's, I would like to see the fire, the ladder truck be pushed out by two years in this, in this CIP. I would be much more comfortable with that. Because one of the, the requirements is that we have at least five buildings that are 35 feet and higher. And I don't believe we've quite met that threshold. We may at some point, but I'd rather not put the fire truck before the buildings. And it would also help improve our cash flow analysis as well. So I concur that we should push that out for two years, and then we can revisit it and still be in our six-year plan. We could bring it up sooner if needed, because we're going to have to decide that on a council level basis anyway, but we do need to get the CIP done. So my motion is to move the fire truck two years out in the CIP.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilor Watten to move the fire truck out two years. Second by Councilmember Mayhew. Councilor Johnson?
Just to be explicit, that would put it in 2025.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Say?
I think Chief Carr picked the wrong meeting not to be at tonight. I, I actually agree. I've, I've been concerned about our, our ending non-un utilities cash balance for a while. Haven't been able to resolve it in, in my head. I also know, you know, I'll note like as Councilman Mayhew had, that we rarely have been, as much as we've tried to spend the kind of dollars we're talking about here, it's been very difficult to, and they usually, things slide a little bit. That's just kind of the nature of the business. So I, I definitely support the, the motion to move it out to 2025. Safe bet.
Councilor Christensen?
Um, I, I do understand the concerns with, that, that have been mentioned, but I also am very concerned about pushing out the purchase of the ladder truck that far. We're currently utilizing two fire trucks that I think are about 20 years old and are both nearing the end of their lives. And with how long it would take in order to actually get the truck once we order it, I have significant concerns about pushing that item out further. We need to make sure that, especially as we're seeing higher temperatures and drier climate, I think we need to make sure that we have adequate fire trucks and that our, our department is adequately sourced with the equipment that they need. And while I do understand that it's a huge cost, I think it's really important that we can keep the people here safe and that we're not spending what could ultimately end up being a lot of money trying to fix up the two very old pieces of equipment that we currently have.
Councilor Hallaway?
So I just want to bring us back in context in part. This, this is a plan. It doesn't authorize specific dollars to be spent. Those will be specific contracts or projects that will be coming back to the committees to approve and eventually to council. And we have done some prioritization in the STIP and other things as to what we, the council, think is the order we want to go in. But keep in mind, no plan survives contact with reality. Okay? And case in point, we've never truly spent up to the levels we've authorized out of the CIP. So we'll see how this goes. Having said that, I'm reluctant to take the fire truck. I, I agree it deserves deeper conversation and should not move to an auth, to a dollarized authorized purchase until we had that lower level conversation. But having said that, I'm reluctant to take it out of the plan at this, or move it out in the plan at this stage, saying that it, you're, at that stage, you really are saying it is not going to happen in the next two years.
Councilor Benson?
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me. That was the way I was understanding the CIP, is that this is a plan and that we would still have a voice in that plan. And that voting on a CIP does not necessarily mean that each and every one of us is 100% on board with exactly how the plan is laid out. Some of these things are, are, you know, five, six years out, and, and there's going to be new stuff that comes up and, and there'll be adjustments. I mean, that's what this is. We're, we're looking at stuff that's being adjusted from other CIPs, so I'm, I'm, I'm very swayed by, by what Councilmember Watten's saying, that we don't have the, the tall buildings yet that we need necessarily to demand that ladder truck immediately. We could, we could in the next few years, but I'm, I'm, I'm also, I, I think Councilmember Christensen's point that it takes a while to get these things is a real concern as well. I don't want to leave our firemen hanging, but, but my understanding, I, I just want to make sure I understand this. If we vote yes on the CIP, that's not voting yes on everything that is going to happen over the next six years, right? That's all I have to say.
Councilor Hallaway?
And I, I do want to at least put the fire truck in, in context. The issue not, is not necessarily the CIP for the fire truck. The issue for the fire truck is the operational costs of that are not currently in the budget. Okay, and we need to understand those operational costs for, for our ladder truck. It's different than one of our other trucks. And have that in the budget before we go buy a fire truck that's going to sit in front of the fire station. Okay, so that's part of the consideration that pu, that public safety will have to go through of when, what's the timing for this fire truck? And make sure that we've got appropriate staffing and budget that supports it before we go purchase. That's part of the, that, that's part of the next stage we do on these items. Every one of these items will have to come back through committee and council to get fully authorized.
Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew?
Yeah, so a, a couple of things. I want to be sure I understand this. It's my understanding that getting the, a ladder truck does not change that we will also have to replace our existing fire truck. In, in other words, this is not one or the other. This ladder fire truck would be in addition to having our regular or our existing fire truck and its replacement. So my understanding is whether we get the ladder fire truck or not, doesn't change that the, we have to replace before too long, as Councilmember Christensen was saying. We need to replace our regular fire truck. So if, if that's a misunderstanding, I, I'd love to know. That's a pretty important thing. So I viewed this as an additional truck, but if that's incorrect, I'd, I'd like to know that it would, it would impact my thinking. The other thing I wanted to say is the, the reasoning, my understanding of the reasoning, and, and I 100% support the mayor in this. The reasoning of bringing CIP to us before we get to the operating budget, is that something, because it's a six-year lookout, there's a whole discussion that we have around that. But that the intention is, having completed the CIP discussion, is my belief that the mayor intends to bring, when it comes to time for the appropriation, that is her intention to lift the 2023 and 2024 columns of the CIP, and that is what she will present to us as the capital budget in the appropriation. And I completely support that. If, if that's a misunderstanding, then please correct it, but I 100% support that. So it's absolutely true what everyone's saying. This is a six-year plan. We're not committing to that, but actually, for the first two years of it, the intention is that this will become our commitment. The 23 and 24, that, just as we see it here, or whatever we end up passing, that'll sort of, that, that'll be our discussion over for CIP. That is what'll come forward in the budget, and I think we should pass this CIP with that in mind, not intend to further revisit capital spending as part of this budgeting cycle.
Because I would like to add there, there are different grants that we need to apply for soon. And so we will take this as go work on grants. If projects are approved, we will start working on those, making requests. And then start writing up requests for the projects to commence, we can start design work, things that need to happen, so that we can go out for quote in January. Otherwise, we lose a whole construction season. So, so we're, we're taking this passage of this seriously. And you're right, it will appear in the biennial budget, but we're counting on, if you approve this, we're going forward with grants and everything else.
Oh, Councilor Watten?
And not to continue too much more on the ladder truck, but there, there are three concerns. First of all is there are a lot of things that we need to understand. First of all, staffing. When one of the engines rolls or an aid car, they're running with three people on those, those calls. Having a ladder truck, I believe, requires a fourth person. That means upstaffing for all the shifts. Unless there's a volunteer that is in place, and right now, our volunteer program is struggling, is my understanding, is being rebuilt. The second one is, and that's additional certification, is having a ladder truck means those firefighters have to have additional certification. In addition to the fact that they're, they're Swift Water certified, all the, all the current firefighters. So then we're going to have to make a decision, and, and it may involve the union as well. So it, it seems to me we're putting the cart before the horse. We need more information, in my opinion, to make a reasonable assessment on that. And I, we just don't have enough information. The, the fear is we could potentially end up with ladder trucks sitting in, at the, the firehouse and incurring costs. And right now, we don't have that luxury. We don't have the need right now to do that. And this will certainly keep it on the front burner, but we're not at that point where we should spend a lot of time worrying about, do we have a ladder truck now? Or do we defer that out anyway? Let's just go ahead and defer it out, and we'll can, we can come back later.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, this is, it's a tough choice, because, you know, it's a safety concern, and it's also a budgetary concern, and both of those are our responsibilities to the community. And, you know, I feel like I'm trying to fit a square peg in a round hole here to sort of have both, and I don't know that I have both. But what I can say is that, is that I, I have concerns for our operating budget as it stands, and adding more when we, I don't want to call it a fiscal cliff, but we've got something that is adjacent to something like that on the horizon. I just don't know if in this biennial budget, we should be potentially adding spending. So, yeah, I, I would like to have a ladder truck, especially when we have a little bit more need for it, which could be within the next, well, within the range of this CIP. But I think that right now, my concern lands greater on the operating budget than it does on our needs for the additional potential protection. And that's, that's kind of where I'm landing on that.
Okay, any more? We have a motion on the floor. Can you please read it back? Move the fire truck purchase out by two years, 2025. Is there any more discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so six. Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew, do, did you vote?
Aye, voted aye.
Okay, so there's six, approve, and Councilor Hallaway, nay, to push out the ladder truck two years. So we still have a main motion on the floor, which is to approve the Resolution 1620, approving the 2023 to 2028 capital improvement.
approving the 2023 to 2028 capital improvement plan. Councilor DeSey?
Thank you, Mayor. The last motion does give us some buffer for our ending nonutility CIP cash balance. I think that's going to be something we're going to need to keep an eye on, especially with the discussion around that essentially the next two years is our biennial budget. I think that puts us in a position where it's a little more comfortable to be able to see, you know, read the tea leaves a little bit as we go along, see what sort of processes and projects can move ahead, how quickly they happen, whether they push from our next biennial to the next, need to push to the next one, which was always, has been my concern. And this is strictly a budgetary conversation. I want to stress that it's not about whether something should be approved or not approved. And that's the community center. Having worked in the architecture development, construction world for the last 28 years, I have serious doubts that we'll be even close to expending the kind of dollars we have in the CIP within the next two years. It'll probably likely be started, but I don't see us spending the dollars we have allocated. I support keeping those dollars where they are, because that shows a commitment to moving forward with that project. And moving towards getting the grants and moving towards finding the partners that we need to find to make that thing a reality. So while I look at this and I struggle with the concept that we could spend the kind of dollars that are here, and I fully expect many of these items to fall into our next biennial budget, and when we're talking about the 2025 CIP, I would encourage my council members not to make a change to the community center expansion project as it's listed in the CIP.
I'm trying to understand that. So you're suggesting to leave it as it is?
I'm suggesting, I'm encouraging my fellow council members to leave it as it is. Call it a preemptive comment prior to anyone.
So split between 2024 and 2025?
Split between 24, although I don't see it being spent at, you know, at that amount in 2024. I think it shows a commitment to moving forward.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Benson?
Yeah, I've really been struggling with this. The idea of passing a bond as a council to do this community center project, it feels like using a tool for the wrong reason. And it feels like a way to sidestep voters who have three times voted down a bond. So I'm worried about that, and I know that's going to be a real problem for me. Because, you know, the mechanism that we're using feels to me like the kind of thing you use in emergency. You know, like all of a sudden your water's Flint, Michigan, or the fire department's telling us to save our old hoses because we're going to have to take care of stuff ourselves, or, you know, the police are putting caps in their guns because they don't have any more bullets left. And I know that might not be the way guns really work, but this particular mechanism feels to me like something you use in emergencies, not a swimming pool. So that's my concern about that. And I know that it's going to be a huge issue for me to vote for us to pass bond to do this.
Budget manager Drew Botte has an update on the bond, just a minute.
Yeah, so in essence, this plan no longer includes a bond. What we did is-
Thank you, done.
Wait, wait to see what it includes though, hang on.
Maybe we're doing something worse.
No, in essence, what we've done here is we've subtracted the bond out, and then we pushed $13 million basically into the next biennial. The goal is for the administration to go out and, as Councilmember LeSey suggested, seek partners, right? Stakeholders as well that could potentially help fund this. But in essence, this plan right now is noncommittal regarding the bond.
That's great. Good job, Drew.
Councilmember Watten?
Well, while I appreciate Councilmember Benson's concerns and fiscal responsibility, even if the council had in their wheelhouse the ability to do their own bond without a vote of the people, that does not preclude having a vote put before, an advisory vote put before the public to have them weigh in, to make sure that we have a very solid plan going forward.
Councilor DeSey?
I just want to say that was well said by Councilmember Watten. My comments, I'm trying to focus solely on the dollars and not get into the project itself, but that is absolutely true. Having this in the CIP does not preclude us from finding partners in other ways, from having a public vote. From, you know, currently, we have the dollars, and I've been looking through this. I feel, now that we've shifted some things around, I feel more comfortable that the dollars are there with the budget, you know, the budgets and the resources we have, with the cash balance that we're carrying forward. But I have long been an advocate for a public vote on any sort of facility expansion beyond small maintenance and operational items. So that does not mean that council will not have that discussion at some point in the future.
Any other comments? Okay. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of approving the 2023-2028 capital improvement plan with the adjustments that we made, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew, did you vote?
I voted aye.
Okay, so it's unanimous vote. Excellent. So the CIP is approved. Thank you. Moving on. There we are now. So the next-
She was going to go there for the last thing.
So anything else from Parks and Public Works?
No additional report.
All right.
Well, I do have one comment. Well, no, I'll wait for later. Never mind.
Oh, okay. Finance Administration Committee Agenda Bill 22-074, financial management policy is continued. And so Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew, we had discussion at FNA recently. Do you want to comment on that?
I do, Councilmember. So we're making, we've made some really significant progress on the financial policies. We've now completed our review through, I think it's Section 3, through the section on revenues. What's particularly important about that is not just, well, Section 3, all these sections are important, but Section 2 in particular deals with reserves. And we've had a very, I think, a fantastic conversation where we've looked at the reserves, how they've been operated in the past, where we did or didn't have enough reserves. One of the areas we identified is in our utility funds. We didn't have reserves previously. So a couple of years ago, we had the Canyon Springs, about $1 million, give or take, problem which is actually utility fund. We had reserves in the general fund that we could have used for that. But in fact, we didn't have reserves in the utility fund. So we've done a complete relook at, and just to go a little further, in the operating fund, we actually had several separate reserves. And so what we've done is relook at all of that and then carefully consider with great discussion with staff, with the mayor, about different ways of evaluating the adequacy of those reserves. So we've come up with a recommended reserve policy. It establishes, for example, a reserve in the utility fund. In fact, it will be fully funded. If we adopt it as proposed, it'll actually be fully funded. So if our future Canyon Springs were to occur, we'd have a funded reserve already in place. And then we've rethought and we think come up with a good range of reserve that we think we need for the general fund. One of the committee members thinks that there's a specific number within that range that we ought to go to. And that's great. It's in the range. We've decided that whatever number, if we adopt a range, that each year we will specifically make sure, we specify how much that reserve is and move it into a separate reserve fund. So there's some mechanics in there of how that will work. That is now what the committee intends to bring forward to the full council. So we have a few sections left. But I request, please, each of you read the draft as it currently stands at a minimum through the revenue section. And please let us know if you have any questions or concerns, more importantly. Now is the time to address that and work through that. We're deep in that and happy to address any concerns you have, either to explain it to you or to revisit it as a committee. Our goal really is that by the time we bring it to the full council, that we have already been through all of the discussions we all need to have. And so hopefully, we'll be ready to adopt it. So that's my report. It's a status report of where we're at. We're going to have some additional committee meetings at the end of the month, the fifth week, where we don't have council meetings or committee meetings. We're going to take that opportunity and try and get through the remainder of this. So that's sort of the status. Please, if you could do your part through Chapter, or through Section 3, through the revenue section, and particularly with reserves, and let us know if you have any concerns. And so that's our status and kind of our plan.
Thank you. City's Clerk Estrada, do you remember what the, there's two more dates that are set up for financial review? So we can throw those dates out if councilmembers wish to attend as well. There will be an FNA meeting. Was it 29th?
29th and 30th, yes, thank you.
So August 29th and 30th will be two special week workshops, two nights in a row to hopefully get through the financial policies and approve those. Actually, discuss them and then come back to Councilor TruRue. So, thank you. Okay. All right, moving on. Thank you. Next, my report is FNA. Any further comments?
Yeah, I was a little confused by the schedule, Mayor. Is this, would it be helpful for me to make some introductory comment about the ARPA discussion that we had? And, you know, what we've asked administration to report, or is that something you'll handle separately?
Well, we do have the presentation that we were going to show that we did during FNA.
Is that, is now the time?
Yes.
So would it be okay if I made just a couple introductory comments?
Sure.
So as you'll see in this presentation, councilmembers, there's now a question of what happens with the remaining ARPA funds. And so the presentation you're about to see with the mayor and staff are bringing forward to us is sort of an accounting for the dollars, a discussion of what is permissible. And they're looking for guidance from us as to which direction we want them to go. So this is, this is a really fantastic request. Mayor is asking us to work together with her and staff to come up with where we want to see this money go. And rather than ask them, hey, go figure out a bunch of things, make a proposal, and then we'll sort of debate priorities and so on at the back end, let's express where we want to see, let's have the work now so that mayor and staff go off knowing that they've got most of us behind them and a majority, and they know where to focus on what to bring us, as opposed to, as you'll see, there's a whole bunch of things it could be. Let's do the work now, so they don't have to run around doing, you know, 10 different options when we're only going to vote for three. Let's get that on the table now. So that's kind of the goal of what's about to happen. And with that, Mayor, over to you and staff for the presentation.
Okay, I've invited our budget manager Drew Botte to present ARPA.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And yes, it's me again. Thank you, council. This discussion is regarding the use of funds for the America Rescue Plan Act. Just to give some background, overall, the city has received $3.8 million in funds from the America Rescue Plan Act. The first tranche was received in June of 2021, and we have indeed received the second tranche of those funds this year. The city engaged, starting last year through pretty much April, in a process to allocate ARPA funds, probably even later than that, May-June as well, to allocate ARPA funds to the community who have been negatively impacted by the pandemic. With that allocation process kind of complete, the administration is seeking council feedback regarding on how to allocate the remaining funds. So just to go over a little bit about the rules that we're dealing with here in terms of our upper funds, there's something called the Final Treasury Rule that the U.S. Department of Treasury has issued. Consequently, it's a huge document. I'm not quite sure how many pages, but probably close to 200 or so, I believe. The city, within this Final Treasury Rule, has elected to apply ARPA funds under the Revenue Loss Eligible Use category. In essence, this allows the city, gives the city really broad latitude to fund, use those funds for government services. And as I said, it's very broad. So what you mean by government services, well, it encompasses quite a lot. And what the U.S. Department of Treasury provides us is government services can include, but are not limited to maintenance or pay-go funding, building of infrastructure, including roads, modernization of cybersecurity, including hardware, software, and protection of critical infrastructure, health services, environmental remediation, school or educational services, and the provision of police, fire, and other public safety services. So it is very broad. Now, of course, this is also subject to certain restrictions. City, however, cannot use funds for debt service to replenish reserves or to satisfy an obligation arising from a settlement or judgment. So we have to keep that in mind as we proceed to allocate these funds. We have allocated dollars to the community, and that was roughly $950,000. And we have that breakdown for you in this table that you see here. But right now, we're kind of focused on that remit, about our total ARPA distribution as a pie. We've really kind of ate probably about 25% of that in total, and so that leaves roughly the 75% left. At the 2022 retreat back in March, we talked a little bit about needing to use those ARPA funds to provide some operating support overall. And you have seen some slides in the past regarding that. We'll look at one here shortly. But in essence, we were prepared to allocate $2 million to kind of support us. That would help to essentially move, push the curve out, basically, before expenditures start to exceed revenues. When you subtract the $950,000 from the community allocation, as well as the $2 million in operating fund support, you have roughly $850,000 left total to allocate for other potential needs. And as I said, we kind of talked a little bit about needing that operating fund support. You may recall this from the retreat. They actually had a row in here that included a transfer of ARPA funds overall. Fortunately, you can't really see things very clearly here. I understand that. But we will have further discussions of what this picture looks like. But, yeah, we'll have Councilmember Hallaway go up there and show us the lineup. But in essence, it is $2 million. Let's kind of discuss $2 million of ARPA funds were anticipated to be used for general governmental purposes over the next three years, roughly $750,000 in 2022, and then a projected allocation of 1.25 for the next biennial. And really, this is for salary and benefits and employee retention initiatives, basically to ensure that we can provide services over the next two-year period at the levels desired. And in addition to that, we also have an ARPA coordinator that we're also funding through this as well. All right. So in terms of our discussion with the FNA committee, we had discussions regarding maybe some potential guiding principles overall. We kind of brainstormed a bit, kind of came up with three here. Using the unallocated funds to protect levels of service during a challenging time economically and with staffing shortages. Potentially using the unallocated funds to invest in systems that will reduce the city's operating expenditures over the long term. Potentially using the unallocated funds to enhance the- potentially using the unallocated funds to enhance the city's ability to generate sustainable revenue over the long term. And so these are some of the principles that we might want to think about as we kind of craft our ideas around how we should allocate these remaining funds. Now, we've had some discussions over time here and there with different council members, committees, for example, staff people, about how we could potentially use these allocated funds. Recently, we've had conversations about maybe just preserving the unallocated funds for potential future needs or inflationary risks. As everyone knows here, we've been dealing with an inflationary pressure overall that has impacted city services and how much we have to spend basically for just supplies, services, salaries, and wages, and includes COLAs and stuff like that as well. In addition to that, we've had one-time appropriations during the pandemic that we actually had to reduce or remove from the 2021-2022 biennial budget. Just to provide an example, we had incorporated into the budget a broadband feasibility study. The reason why we've got the Washington State Public Works Board here is maybe we can actually go out and find some funding from the state to support that overall. But in essence, that is something that we had removed from that budget back then, and maybe we want to bring back and have further consideration and maybe want to allocate these funds towards that. We've had numerous discussions regarding information technology improvements, council chamber audiovisual upgrade, kind of the work that we do in here, making this easier overall. Cybersecurity services, conference room technology retrofits, security infrastructure, and also potentially supporting the ERP project enterprise asset module, specifically in order to maybe support us in what we need to do in terms of inventory and our capital assets that will help us really move into the future as we may seek to move from, say, a cash basis system to a GAAP basis of accounting in this city. Next, we may also want to consider a second round of community allocations. This would be in addition to the $950,000 that we have provided to the community so far. But then also, there could be other additional community investments, such as just the CIP that we had passed recently, maybe the Community Parks Breakdown Project. We have had robust discussions regarding the Take Home Vehicle Program, but also there might be some land acquisition opportunities out there for the city as well. So, next steps. We appreciate a discussion regarding how to allocate the remaining $850,000. We would appreciate if council could establish some principles, like we'll guide how to use those unallocated funds and potentially establish a process to help determine how to use those unallocated ARPA funds. And we may suggest two proposals here, maybe using an ARPA committee, council committee, to kind of wade through a lot of those proposals. But also, there's the potential that council may want to ask the administration to develop a proposal and maybe bring it back to committee at the whole. And then subsequent to that, what council may want us to do, we will convene that process and come back to you at a later date. So with that said, that's a brief presentation and time for discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bote. Councilor Benson.
Yeah, I'm. We had a public comment on this, this very topic earlier and the suggestion that maybe the city can do things to help small businesses in Snequami as a whole and by, by doing things that would be communally good for bringing in more tourists, marketing. A suggestion was made for improved holiday lighting, that, that sort of thing. Could a portion of these funds go toward something like that, that would help small businesses improve tourism, draw more people into, into the area? And maybe some of the things like, I thought the holiday lighting suggestion was an interesting one because it's something that would be, would, would benefit us for years. It's, are there perhaps projects like that, that we could maybe use some of these funds to, to get going so that we can start benefiting from them immediately and, and for years to come?
My answer to that is yes. Under the Revenue Loss Eligible Use category, government services is very broad, and this would probably qualify as a overall government service, so.
Councilor Walton.
Are we doing this as a round robin, probably?
Certainly.
Get everybody's input. I think this is one of those one-time opportunities where we have a chance to leverage some dollars and figure out how can we make that most beneficial to the community? And I appreciate Kelly Coughlin's remarks from the business community and the business perspective as to how that we might be going forward. I would, I would almost think that if we put out a request for proposal from nonprofits that are based here in the valley that impact small businesses or families to bring forward proposals of, of what they would do and what the potential benefit is, we might get a little broader perspective, and maybe we put a dollar amount, maybe we cap it at 50,000. Or maybe, you know, that's yet to be decided, but that, that would be a worthwhile task. And then we assemble a committee that would review those RFPs and kind of do a ranking based on that.
And what would be the RFP? What would we?
It would be for public benefit, either benefiting businesses or benefiting assisting families with resiliency or, or being able to help bridge the gap that was caused during the COVID period.
Good idea. Councilor Holloway.
Presentation's all good, discussion's all good. I think we have one question here tonight, and that is that question right there. Do you want to charter a committee to work with administration to come back with proposals? Or do you want the administration to go off and come back with a proposal of how to spend these extra ARPA funds? I think we're getting into talking step three and four when we haven't answered step one yet. My recommendation is you do, we go ahead and charter an ARPA committee to talk about how to do that, what to do with his next funds, what are appropriate things cognizant of those guiding principles we talked up above of revenue and cost containment. That's it for me.
Councilor Lysay.
What Councilmember Holloway said.
See, that's well said, right there. I think, I think that makes a good point.
As long as we allocate some money, does somebody turn the fans on?
I'm agreeable to that as well.
Turning the fans on? Yeah.
Council Johnson.
There we go.
Yes, I, I agree with that. If we did go with a council committee, I'd want it to be one that is appointed by the council.
Your pro temp, Mayhew. Any comments?
Yeah, I, I think this is a really big number. And I think we were elected to be the policymakers for the city. And one of our constituents is the business community. The business community has the funds to hire someone to come in and kind of lobby for them, and that's great. And I appreciate that, and I like to listen to that. But I'm also mindful that that if the federal government had wanted to give the money a certain way only, they would have done that. So what they really wanted to do was say to us is, we recognize that you've lost a whole bunch of revenue, and you have a whole bunch of needs, and we want to help cover that. So I think we should look broadly at what our needs are and try to come up with the categories. I, I love the idea that I thought Ms. Coughlin brought for, earlier of ideas that we could spend that would help the business community on a long-term basis, things such as the holiday lights, were mentioned a few minutes ago, that will have years and years of impact. I think that's fantastic. But I think it's the responsibility of all seven of us, all eight of us, including the mayor, all of us who are elected to set the priorities. I don't think that, you know, we don't send big things like this to three of us. We do this, all eight of us. We have a Parks and Public Works Committee, and we say, hey, go dig into Parks and Public Works, but come back and make a recommendation to the full council, and then, and then we'll debate it. So I think the notion of a, a committee who's going to make big giant decisions for us and thereby take things off the plate, I, I think that's a mistake. I think we should make those decisions as a full group. And then if we have a committee that we need to say, okay, now work out some of the details of this, that's fine. I think it's premature until we decide what the major spending we want to do. Is it on facilities? Is it some of the things that were in some of the earlier slides, facilities that we need to run the city? Is it on, and by the way, I don't think these are all this or that, maybe it's portions for each, but is it facilities? Is it things that will help our city run more efficiently? Is it things our city needs but can't afford because of, amongst other things, the loss of revenue during COVID? Is it things we can do to strengthen the business community that have, not just giving them money, but things that will actually build the infrastructure, building, you know, things that will attract tourists and be good for our residents for years and years come? I think we should make those big decisions as a, a group. And then if there's a committee to figure out some of the details later, let's cross that bridge when we get to it. But, but I would say, I, I think I'm in favor of all of us tackling this, at least to make the big decisions in, in big chunks.
Councilor David. Which way you would like to go, Council? Would you want, someone brought up the ARPA Council Committee? And remember Tim Mayhew suggesting all eight have a say in it, but taking it back to individual council committees? Matt Lysay or Councilmember Lysay?
Let me defer to Councilmember Mayhew first. He raised his hand again. I'd like to hear, since it was his. I'd like to hear from Councilmember Mayhew first. I can defer.
Your pro temp, Mayhew.
Yes, sorry, I just wanted to clarify. I realized my comments were confusing. I apologize. I was not recommending we take it to committees at all. My recommendation is, let's all of us meet on this. Let's work through which of these categories are the ones we want to spend money on in some general sense of what the money is. If we can then figure out, and that's enough guidance for mayor and staff to go come back to us with specific proposals, great. If the guidance we come up with needs a lot more detail run out on it, and then we need a, an ARPA council committee to work out those details sort of within that broad guideline that we came up with together, fine, then let's cross that bridge then. But I, I'm advocating, let's all eight of us, it's a workshop, whatever it is, let's go through these proposals that are on these slides. I think it's all laid out there and pick which categories and broadly how much money we want to put there and see if, if we can get there on our, as a group.
Councilor Lysay.
So thank you for that clarification. I kind of wanted to hear what I thought I heard, but here again.
Please hold for one second. Are we back online? He is. Okay, I guess.
So one of the categories will be IT and internet improvements, obviously. But now it seems like we're back. Okay. Okay, so basically, I'm taking a stretch here by saying this, but we're a little bit ahead of our target dates for the mill site discussions. If we were to take an hour of, maybe not tomorrow, but of the next mill site, and so it's publicly noticed, and make that a roundtable for council and mayor to have discussions around large items in terms of categories and to appoint an ARPA council committee. So I'm going to go ahead and take the shot and say, move to establish a roundtable at the next available date in lieu of time spent on the mill site discussion for a council roundtable, council mayor roundtable to establish categories for allocation and to appoint an ARPA committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Lysay. He made a motion. Please, you repeat it back, please.
I can repeat the first portion, but I might need you to.
Let's do it together.
Okay, so I have to establish a roundtable at the next available date in lieu of mill site discussion for a council roundtable to identify.
To identify topics for distribution or for topics of distribution of ARPA funds and appoint an ARPA council committee.
I'm assuming this could be after the mill site decision.
It would, no.
So I think we need everything until we do have a mill site decision. Then, oh, so now you're, now you're adding another.
That's not my motion.
You're adding another topic on top of it.
That's not my motion. My motion is to take time in one of the, the pre, pre-scheduled dates and take an hour of that three-hour window and do this.
You should add council priorities there, too. Councilor Benson.
I'm, I, I, I love the, I, Councilmember Lysay's got his track shoes on on this. I think one of the big knocks on the last tranche of ARPA funds is it took us too long to act on it. But, but I am concerned that I, that we get through the mill site decision, too. Are we, is this something where can we afford this hour from that discussion? Or do we maybe need to carve out another hour somewhere? But I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm big in favor of doing this sooner rather than later. I'm just not sure that we're going to be able to carve out an hour from the mill site discussion. That's all I had.
Councilor Christiansen.
My, my thought on that, I also have concerns that we're going to end up getting bogged down at the mill site, and I don't want to push that. I think that it's important to maintain the schedule that we have, as well as the identifiable topics that we're supposed to be going through and discussing each time. My alternative thought in terms of scheduling is, is that similarly to where we've added on two additional sessions for financial policies and procedures, we are in a month that has a fifth week that does not ordinarily have meetings. So I was curious to see whether that might be a different option for people to come and, and meet on that. Not, again, I don't want to mess with the schedule on the financial policies and procedures as well, but we may have a little bit more flexibility that week while still being sensitive to the fact that obviously, the use of the ARPA funds is somewhat time-sensitive, and it, it may make more of an impact to the extent that we can get rolling on it as soon as possible.
Councilor Holloway. If we did round robin, Councilor Lysay has spoken. Councilor Holloway, you haven't spoken?
I yield the floor to Councilmember Lysay, then I will pick it up.
Councilor Lysay.
Just wanted to point out that according to the schedule that the administration put together, we are one month and three meetings ahead of our discussions on the, on the mill site. Taking one hour of time to establish priorities for ARPA funds to support our businesses, our nonprofits, and our community, I do not think is wasted time. I do not think it is inappropriate, and I do not support us pushing it out again as we did the last round, and it took nearly a year to get funds to people. We've had the funds. We've had it since July. We need to do this.
Councilor Holloway.
One, I think, taking any group of eight people and presenting them a clean, blank piece of paper and having them come up with a decision within an hour. I've only seen it in very few cases, okay, guys? Two, I am concerned about taking things away from the mill site discussions. We've just been in education mode. We haven't been in discussion mode yet. Hang on, we're getting there. So I, I could be wrong there, but I, I'm reluctant to take away from that. So I will advise you that when we did reconstitute, note the word, reconstitute the ARPA committee, we got it out. Okay? Okay? My recommendation is that you do that committee. You have them come back with those big recommendations and logic behind what the big chunks are, we ought to go after and why. And have that then ratified or modified at council. At no time was my suggestion at the beginning of this, nor do I believe administration's suggestion that we would abdicate the council's responsibility to that committee. I disagree with that interpretation. Okay? But in order to frame the conversation and give some direction, some focus time, I do think you ought to have that committee in there and go off and do that with the administration. Always put.
Councilor Vincent?
Yeah, I, I also like to say, I don't think anybody said that spending an hour on this would be a waste of time. I think all of us believe that this is an excellent use of our time. It's just deciding which time would be the best time. I'm not sure that pushing off the mill site decision is the best way to do this. Perhaps there's a committee that's already in existence that we can make, uh, their next meeting, a council of the whole. Maybe an F and A meeting or something like that, make it a council of the whole meeting and, and fit it in there. Uh, uh, nobody was saying that this discussion is a waste of anybody's time. So I, I think we can dispense with that kind of talk.
Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew?
Um, yeah, so I think our conversation kind of reveals what we're thinking. If, if our, if we say eight people can't get to a decision, let's have a committee, then what we're saying is the committee will make the decision. Because if we believe that all eight will be involved, then you've got the same problem when it comes back for committee. So going that path means no, we're actually going to make most of the decisions at a committee. I don't think that that should happen if they're the big decisions about where we're going to put the money. If it's going to be the mechanics of how we just distributed, that I think is okay for a committee, but I, I don't think we're there yet. I, um, I think, uh, as I understood it, and I don't want to speak for any other council member, but as I, as I understood it, the proposal was let's find time soon to do this. I thought Councilor Christiansen's proposal made a lot of sense. Uh, look, we've got a lot of stuff to do as a council, uh, right now, and I think we all want to do it well. Um, so I, I think we should find time. That doesn't mean we have to take a, the idea of taking away from another time, as I understood, it was not really trying to do that. It was just trying to find some time soon, which I certainly endorse. So I would say, I think the next step is for all of us to meet. Let's find as soon as time we can, and I think that's going to require us to pitch in a little more time. Uh, let's do that. Let's set the broad categories and then at that point, if we feel like, okay, we've done that, now it's down to the details, fine, let's come up with a committee. Or, you know, tell, you know, endorse the mayor to go ahead, what, whatever we sort of makes sense to us at that point. That would be the approach I would endorse. I, I think I, I don't want to be in a position where whole things are taken off the plate because I wasn't at a committee meeting. And then at a full meeting, I'm saying, wait, forget what the committee did. Let's put this stuff back on the table. I don't think that's how we'll do it. I think the stuff the committee takes off the table will be off the table. And I, I don't think that should happen that way. I think the eight of us should do that. Not three or four of us. Not the big pieces, little pieces, fine, not the big pieces.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I think that, um, uh, utilizing our uh, fifth week, uh, might be a wise decision. Um, and I think that that's, that's where I'm leaning. I believe that that's not the dinosaur that's on the table right now. But, um, yes, if, if we come to that dinosaur, then that's the one that I'm going to be riding on like a Flintstone.
Fifth week's already scheduled.
Yeah, we already got.
How we do?
Two workshops, three hours, two nights in a row.
We can address it when we get to November.
Okay. The motion on the table?
Establish a round table at the next available date in lieu of mill site discussion for a council round table to identify topics for distribution of ARPA funds and appoint an ARPA council committee.
Councilor Watten?
May I make this suggestion that we have a committee of three, work with the mayor to come back with a list of opportunities? And then we as a council come together and prioritize those. So at least we have something to start with.
Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand Councilor Watten's proposal. I think he's trying to find a way to move it along without, um, tripping the thing I was concerned about, which is things coming off the table. I, I just want to. I, I had the idea that sort of these slides we saw tonight kind of had everything on them. And we just sort of need to choose some of those and allocate some money. But maybe that's just wrong thinking. Maybe Councilmember Watten could just talk a little bit more about whether this first sort of set would be taking things off the table or they wouldn't, or they just, I, I just didn't fully understand it. I think he's trying to make it work better, but maybe he could explain it more.
Sure. So let's put all the ideas on the table. And then give each member the opportunity to say, that's my choice. That's my number one, two, and three choice. And then we can figure out the allocations from that. So we're not taking anything away. We just have full view, full transparency. And then we can fine tune it from those priorities. And it may be the top, out of the top sixteen, out of sixteen, the top eight survive. And then we figure out, okay, how are we going to allocate the money to those eight items? It may be five, maybe four. But I think, uh, having not been but through part of the ARPA before, we didn't have that. That discussion may not have happened that way. And I think that with the new council coming on board, um, it, it really kind of, um, put us back to starting all over again midstream.
Mayor Pro Tim Mayhew?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand that. I think I'm getting there is how would that potentially, how would that list be different than what was just on the slides we already saw? Right? Would it be that there would be more specifics or would it be that we put dollar amount? I'm trying to understand what, how exactly this would work that's different than what's actually in front of us already.
I, I think there's a list of things, of projects, if I may, I'm sorry, that we could, the staff has identified, perhaps the mayor has a couple others. Uh, certainly Kelly Coughlin from the chamber brought forward, um, five different ideas. And those can all go on the slate together. And then we kind of cull through those and figure out which ones have the biggest impact.
Councilor Christiansen?
Uh, to the extent that we go forward with that, I think, and I do think that it's a, a good idea. Um, I think maybe leaving open the option for folks to add additional topics between then and now would also be helpful. So that we're not limited to the list that, that we've been shown as well as the one that's, that's been brought forth today. Uh, I think that there's a number of good suggestions from both sources, but maybe give some additional time in case any others come from the community as well, so that we have the option to, to add to that list.
They want to ask if we have the comments? Your pro Tim Mayhew?
Yeah, so based on what I've heard, I'm not in favor of committee at this time. I'm in favor of the list. I think that's fantastic. From all the sources that Councilor Watten mentioned, that Councilmember Christiansen mentioned, but staff, just give us the list. Let's have a meeting as soon as we can schedule one. And, uh, let's go through that list, the eight of us, and then see where we go from there. I, I think a committee, any narrowing of decision makers, I think is premature at this point. I would be against that.
We have a, can you read again the motion on the table?
I was, I was going to propose before you read the motion that I, I'm willing to, to withdraw. Thank you. I'm willing to withdraw the in lieu of mill site discussion portion of that motion. So at the next available time for council to, to have a, a discussion on, uh, ARPA funds and appointing a committee.
And who's second? Was that?
That was Councilor Mayhew's second.
So Councilor Mayhew, are you okay with that withdrawal of the in lieu of mill site?
I am.
Okay. So we need to correct that motion. Councilor Hallway?
So a point of clarification, last time I heard the motion read, there was a, the ending of it of assign a committee? Don't believe that was part of the motion.
That wasn't.
That was it?
I, I moved to remove assign a committee from the motion.
I can't hear you. Can you talk in there, please?
I moved to remove assign the committee from the motion.
Second.
This moved by Councilor Hallway, seconded by Councilor, um, Mayhew to remove assigning the committee from the motion. So what is the overall motion now?
Do you want to vote on, vote on the, vote on the little dinosaur before?
Councilor LaSey?
Uh, if there's allowed discussion after the motion and second.
May I just interrupt just for one moment, please? Um, was there a second to Hallways?
Mayor Pro Tim seconded.
Yes.
So if we're going to meet to talk about the priorities, then and we're not going to appoint a committee to refine those.
I'm not going to constrain you that you have to. You can make the decision at that meeting to assign a committee, but I'm not going to presuppose.
Then let's vote and move this on. We're talking, we're doing this all night.
Okay, so we have the motion is to remove the committee from the current motion, right? Our committee, yeah. Any other comments regarding that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so six in favor, um, Councilor say.
Five, five in favor.
Five in favor? Did you say nay as well?
Yes.
So Councilor Watten and Councilor say voted against.
Sorry.
So the original motion now.
So the original motion now reads, establish a round table at the next available date for a council round table to identify topics for distribution of ARPA funds.
Any other comments or discussion? Right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Heard three nays. Who's the third nay? So I heard Councilor say, Councilor Watten. Only two?
Councilor agree.
Hallway.
Councilor Hallway. Okay. So the most passes? Four, four and three against. All right. So we have an assignment. So we will go forward and go for the date.
Uh, if you permit me, please, Mayor.
Absolutely.
I've got a message from Sam Bronfield, our, our coordinator, just to give a brief update regarding the funds that we have allocated. Uh, contracts have been sent out for signature for all organizations who have submitted the required documentation. Finance team is planning a special check run this week. Uh, tentatively planning a check pickup at City Hall potentially next week, uh, for those businesses that have been approved, which is good news. So hopefully get those dollars out the door next week. The ARPA coordinator, the communications team and Mayor Ross are planning a delivery ceremony next week. And so we're excited about that, potentially a couple of businesses around town. So look forward to more communication on that. And thank you, council, for all your support, for the business community, for their support as well, and to the administration too, and all their hard work on this. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, budget manager. And Mayhew, you have your hand up?
Yeah, uh, first off, Mayor, congratulations and, and deep thanks to you and to staff for getting those checks out. That is just fantastic news. Would it be, I, I, if, if possible, if between now and whenever that meeting occurs that we just voted on, if you're able to, if staff is able to, I think it'd be fantastic if they reached out to people like Ms. Coughlin, who had a number of specific ideas, and I had the idea was alluding to possibly being able to have some other specific ideas. I'd love to get, uh, that input sort of gathered up and, and put into our process. If you could, uh, you know, staff resources, you know, uh, permitting, but that'd be fantastic. We gather additional input from community and from her and so forth.
Um, we certainly can do it and, and council members can reach out as well. That would be helpful as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good point.
Great. Okay, moving on to Mayor's report. So several different things. So the Snoqualmie participated in the kickoff of the King County Wildfire Risk Reduction Strategy, which is designed to improve coordination and provide a strategic approach to wildfire risk reduction. The strategy's approach and has 12 recommended actions that organize around three strategic priorities. So it's increasing forest resilience, reducing risks to communities and infrastructure in the wildland urban interface, which is the Wui, where we are located, and strengthening emergency response. So the city of Snoqualmie, um, assisted in the development of this wildland fire risk reduction strategy by contributing the expertise of our urban forester, Phil Bennett. The Snoqualmie Fire Department has also been expanding wildland firefighter training opportunities, agency collaborations and focusing on community education, highlighting the importance of defensible spaces around homes utilizing firewise strategies. So there will be a presentation in the near future to council regarding the King County Wildfire Risk Reduction Strategy. So, um, just a reminder, the city of Snoqualmie launched the new website page to process refunds of the car tab fees. And you will see, um, maybe either $20 or $40. So make sure that you can go onsite on the, um, website and fill out the form for the car tab refund. There's a couple, um, opportunities for residents to attend some fun events. This week is the Boeing Classic and we'll hear a little bit more about the Snoqualmie days that are coming up from our council member Hallaway. Be sure to go to the Boardwalk and Historic Downtown. You'll see lots of new tables and chairs. And I've seen people sitting there enjoying ice cream or having lunch or meeting with friends there. So it's a great place to, to just go and enjoy Historic Downtown. The general sewer plan link was sent to council on July 29th to provide advance notice of the plan and chance review prior to the Parks and Public Works Committee on August 16th. And, um, will be reviewed by council, city council at the August 22nd meeting. This is a pretty long, um, plan, so I encourage you to review it. Counselor did review the draft in July 2021 and then it was submitted to state and local agencies for review after that. So it has been through the whole process. So now it's back to council for final approval. Um, special workshops tomorrow regarding the mill site review. We're starting at 6:00 PM. And let's see, I guess one final thing. Actually, there's two different things, but, um, thank you to our city clerk Estrada, who has resigned effective later August. She brought leadership, innovation, organization and attention to detail to this position. For instance, she implemented a planning calendar for, excuse me, for all the meetings, improved the agenda bill process, implemented the Muni codes, which provides easier access to agenda bills, resolutions, contracts, and improved the master ordinance log and other information. So we are sorry to see her go and we wish you best of luck. So we have, um, City Minister Sarwin will now review the July department reports.
Good evening, your honor, members of the council. I realize I am the curtain dragger in this evening's festivities, so I will attempt to be brief. Just to follow up on what the mayor had said, uh, one of the things that really has excited me is the work that Deb has done on Muni code and Muni docs and getting all of that in, in place. I'm a bureaucrat. I love this stuff. Um, on a less happy note, I will say that having Deb leave is a little like somebody lopping off my left arm. Uh, and you have just done a fantastic job for the city in the time that you've been here. Thank you very much. Um, also included in your packet is, is some statistics on public records requests. Our communications department, um, is significantly stepping up our social media. Uh, there's details included in your packet, also on the website and, uh, a number of different events that we've had. Everything from the mayor at the Fourth of July. at the Fourth of July parade to the King County Fire Risk Reduction, and also making speeches and a lot more photography and pictures on our website, which I really appreciate. The Community Development Department has been working on a number of things, which you've seen this evening. And one of the largest is also the Planning Commission working on a housing needs assessment. Our finance department has also been very busy, and again, you've seen a lot of the issues they've been working on this evening, everything from finance policy updates. We get to spend a couple more quality hours together later this month, talking about finance policies, capital improvement plan, and of course, the most important, the biannual budget. Our fire department has included a lot of statistical information in the budget or in the packet. It's actually really kind of interesting to go through and just see all of the different things that the department's working on. Our IT department has been really increasing their responsiveness to service desk requests, which I deeply appreciate. Also, the Darktrace cybersecurity is up and running, and they're also working on updating the facilities here in the meeting room, and also cameras and security equipment at all of our city buildings. Our Parks and Public Works departments have been working on everything from the red, white, and blue, and boom event to adding the markings for pickleball courts. Some of you guys here will appreciate that. And also just mention that Larry White retired after long-term park supervisor. A great article about him in the local paper, if you saw that earlier. And finally, our police department, our new captain, who had to leave a little, had to leave a little earlier, has joined us. We're working on getting grant funds for a license plate reader and also our behavioral health specialist. We have selected someone. They are going through the background process as we speak. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, council, is there any updates as your community liaison reports? Councilor Hallway?
As your Snoqualmie days liaison, who really hasn't been doing his job, but one week from Saturday will be Snoqualmie days, so tell your friends and families. Get them out. We're all used to looking inside our four walls and staying there since the pandemic. Let's let everybody know we're off and running. Come out and enjoy.
Any other updates?
Is it part of, I was just going to say, is a part of the fire department is having their pancake breakfast?
Yes, absolutely. Like seven to 11 or something like that. Councilor Watten?
And the Arts Commission is hosting the plein arts with Snoqualmie Days. So there's a lot of volunteers out there helping to make Snoqualmie Days a great event.
Yes. All right, anything else? Well, I don't see anything else on the agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
Move to adjourn?
Seconded.
So moved by Councilor Hallway and seconded by Councilor Benson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, unanimous, and we adjourn.
It's seven minutes of.